Good evening. I call this February 9th, 2021 Meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to Order. This meeting is being streamed on the Town of Morrisville Facebook page and the Town of Morrisville website. On February 11th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. A link to this page will also be placed on the Town of Morrisville social media pages. To ensure the safety of town residents, staff, and the town council while following guidelines related to public gatherings, this meeting is being facilitated electronically via Teams meeting. All council members will be fully able to fully participate in this evening's work. Tonight's meeting includes two public hearings. Town Council understands the importance of active citizen participation. Public hearing comments were accepted from 9:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. today. Comments received from interested parties not previously submitting a comment and providing full name and address via the publichearings@townofmorrisville.org email address will be read verbatim during the public hearing for up to three minutes each for a total of 30 minutes. Town Council may choose to suspend some or all of these rules if desired. The final draft land use plan hearing that was initiated at the January 26th Town Council meeting has been opened since that meeting until 3:00 p.m. today. Town Council was provided all comments received by 3:00 p.m. on Friday, February 5th to review over the weekend, but will be read this evening. Comments received since that time from members of the public who did not get an opportunity to submit public input on January 26th were encouraged to do so by emailing publichearings@townofmorrisville.org. At this time, Eric Smith, our town clerk, will conduct a roll call of council members. Mr. Smith?
Mayor Colley?
Present.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Fender?
Present.
Councilmember Garamella?
Present.
Councilmember Rau?
Present.
Councilmember Robati?
Present.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Present.
All councils present.
Thank you, sir. We're at now Agenda Item Number Three. Is there a motion and second to invoke Rule 19? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati, please.
I make a motion that we invoke Rule 19.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
I second that motion.
Thank you very much. Town Clerk Smith will conduct a roll call vote.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rau?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Motion to invoke Rule 19 passes unanimously.
Thank you. We're at Item Four, Adoption of Regular Agenda. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Do any council members have any such conflicts?
None.
Okay. Seeing none, at this time, I'd like to ask if any council member would like to add anything to tonight's agenda.
I would. Mayor, this is Vicki.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, yes, please.
Yes. I would like to request a short discussion of the format for the retreat that is later this month. It's my understanding that staff is preparing for either a live retreat or a virtual retreat. And I think it would be helpful if we made a decision about that format tonight in order to allow both the public and the staff to plan accordingly.
Thank you. Do any council members have any issue with having that short discussion right after we adopt tonight's agenda? Okay. Hearing none, that will be the plan. Right after we adopt the agenda, we'll have that short discussion. I'll pass it back to you at that time, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Thank you.
Is there a motion and a second to adopt tonight's agenda, please? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati, followed by Mayor Protem Johnson.
I make a motion that we adopt tonight's agenda.
And I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. Town Clerk Smith, if you could please conduct a roll call vote to adopt tonight's agenda.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rau?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adopt the regular agenda with the addition of a discussion item related to the Town Council retreat passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We're moving on to Item Five, Consent Agenda at this time. There are two items on this evening's consent agenda. An Audit Services Contract Award for June 30th, 2021 through June 30th, 2023, and consideration of annexation for property located at Zero International Drive. Do any council members desire to take either of those items off for further discussion before our vote? Seeing none, is there a motion and second to adopt tonight's consent agenda? I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati, please.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. Town Clerk Smith, if you could please conduct a roll call vote to adopt tonight's agenda.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rau?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adopt the regular agenda with the addition of a discussion item related to the Town Council retreat passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We're moving on to Item Five, Consent Agenda at this time. There are two items on this evening's consent agenda. An Audit Services Contract Award for June 30th, 2021 through June 30th, 2023, and consideration of annexation for property located at Zero International Drive. Do any council members desire to take either of those items off for further discussion before our vote? Seeing none, is there a motion and second to adopt tonight's consent agenda? I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati, please.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. Town Clerk Smith, if you could do a roll call vote on the consent agenda, please.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rau?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to pass the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Okay. We have pulled nothing from the consent agenda, so that was Item Six. Item Seven is Public Address. Town Clerk Smith will now present any public comments received. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, sir. There was one public comment received for tonight's public comment portion. It reads as follows. My name is Steve Lauderdale. I am a Town of Morrisville resident. I reside at 2104 Blade Valley Lane. I am reaching out to the Town of Morrisville Council to highlight some school-related internal communication issues. Attached are an October 2020 email and Excel document from a Town staff member to the individual coordinating data collection for Wake County Public School System. I obtained this information via a Morrisville Public Records Request. For ease of viewing, I also provided a PDF version of the Excel data. You may know that the Town Planning Staff has stated that they are in constant communication with Wake County Public School System. I do not expect planning staff to provide sensitive information, such as land buying opportunities, to the Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee. However, it seems it would be helpful if Town staff would consider sharing other Wake County Public School System communications with the Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee. Is that too much of an ask? The data sent to Wake County Public School System shows that Morrisville estimates adding about 1,800 residential units in the near term. It seems it is worthwhile bringing that information to the Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee's attention. That amount of residential development will have an impact on school issues for our residents. Even with recent school openings, three of the 20 cap schools are base schools for Morrisville. Seven other base schools for Morrisville are operating at over 100% capacity. Too much growth will limit the ability of Morrisville residents to attend proximate schools. Too much growth will also limit school calendar opportunities for Morrisville residents. When will Morrisville stop shooting itself in the foot? Also attached is a related 2020 email from MPAC, Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee staff liaison, explaining that she did not plan to share this information because it might be misconstrued. As a public service, I am willing to submit periodic public records requests to the Town and pass noteworthy results to the Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee. Alternatively, perhaps some Town Council members can encourage efforts to improve internal communication between the Planning Department and Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee. That is the single public comment received for tonight's public address portion.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Item Eight, Public Hearing. There are two public hearing items on the agenda this evening. A Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, text amendment allowing flexibility during a state of emergency, and a resolution pertaining to the land use plan adoption. Michelle Stiegel, Planning Director, will facilitate the first item. Ms. Stiegel?
Thank you, Mayor Colley. Just a minute, and I will try and bring this item up. As was indicated, the first public hearing this evening relates to a proposed text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance that would grant staff flexibility in the administration of the code during a state of emergency. The need for the proposed amendment was really brought to light with the COVID-19 pandemic and the need to take quick decisive action in order to support the public health and safety during a state of emergency. And the amendment that's being proposed would allow the Town Manager and the Planning Director the authority to waive or modify a UDO standard during a state of emergency. The waiver or modification would need to relate to responding to the emergency. And while this text amendment is being proposed in light of the COVID-19 pandemic, it would not be limited to use just during the COVID-19 pandemic. It could also be exercised under other states of emergency, for instance, if there was a natural disaster. Some of the types of activities that it could be used to accommodate would be things such as temporary housing, emergency command facilities, temporary medical facilities for testing and vaccination, mobile hospitals, temporary hospitals, and other similar, mostly temporary activities that would occur during these unique times and that are otherwise accommodated for and permitted under the UDO. The authority granted to staff would cease as soon as the state of emergency concluded. Would also like to note that the proposed text change that is before you this evening was prepared in cooperation with the Assistant Town Manager and the Town Attorney, both of who reviewed and provided input into the proposed amendment and who are working in partnership with Wake County on some other efforts related to COVID-19. So there are two action items on your agenda for consideration this evening. The first is a resolution approving a consistency statement, and the second, an ordinance approving the proposed text amendment. We are proposing to do the briefing, public hearing, and action all in one evening tonight. As you know, North Carolina remote meeting law does require the public hearing to remain open for at least 24 hours after the meeting. So typically, we do leave that public hearing open until midnight the next night or midnight tomorrow night, and that would still be the case. So as drafted, the ordinance that is before you would automatically take effect on February 11th, provided that no comment in opposition to the amendment is received. If we do receive any comments in opposition to the amendment during that 24-hour period, this item would come back to you on February 23rd. And I'm willing to answer any questions that the council may have.
Do any council members have any questions or comments for what Director Stiegel has just presented? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella, please.
Thanks, TJ. Michelle, you said like if you get an opposition, so what does that really count? If you get, you know, 10 yeses and one no, so that comes back to the council?
If we received any public comment that was not in support of the amendment, as drafted, the ordinance would come back to you essentially for a second reading on February 23rd.
Okay. All right. That's, all right, sounds good.
Thank you. So at this time, is there a motion to close the public hearing as of midnight tomorrow night? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella, please.
Yeah. I move the motion to close the public hearing. Do I have to read the whole thing, or?
No, just as of midnight tomorrow night.
As of midnight tomorrow night.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Robati, please.
I second the motion.
Okay. Town Clerk Smith, if you could please do a roll call vote on closing the public hearing as of midnight tomorrow night, February 10th.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rau?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to close the public hearing as of midnight February 10th passes unanimously.
Okay. At this time, the public hearing is closed. Do any council members want to have any discussion on this before we go ahead and do the first of two motions, resolution and ordinance? Okay. Seeing none, I entertain a motion on Resolution 2021-39-0. I'll recognize Mayor Protem Johnson.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-39-0 of the Morrisville Town Council approving a planned consistency review statement for a Unified Development Ordinance text amendment allowing flexibility during a state of emergency.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I hear a second? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender, please.
I second that motion.
Town Clerk Smith, if you would please do the roll call vote.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rau?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to approve Resolution 2021-39-0 passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. Is there now a motion on ordinance 2021-39-0? I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-39-0 of the Morrisville Town Council approving a planned consistency review statement for a Unified Development Ordinance text amendment allowing flexibility during a state of emergency.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I hear a second? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender, please.
I second that motion.
Town Clerk Smith, if you would please do the roll call vote.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rau?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to approve Resolution 2021-39-0 passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. Is there now a motion on ordinance 2021-39-0? I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-39-0 of the Morrisville Town Council approving a text amendment of the Unified Development Ordinance allowing flexibility during a state of emergency.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati?
I second that motion.
Thank you. Town Clerk Smith, if you would please do the roll call vote.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rau?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to approve ordinance 2021-39-0 passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. Is there now a motion on ordinance 2021-39-0? I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-39-0 of the Morrisville Town Council approving a text amendment of the Unified Development Ordinance allowing flexibility during a state of emergency.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati?
I second that motion.
Thank you. Town Clerk Smith, if you would please do the roll call vote.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rau?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to approve ordinance 2021-39-0 passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Before I let you go, Director Stiegel, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rau, please. Okay. I believe his hand might have been up from earlier. So I'd like to thank Director Stiegel for preparing that item for us, and thank you very much. Appreciate your proactive nature of that. At this time, we'll move on to Item 8B. Brad West, Senior Planner, will facilitate this item. Mr. West?
Good evening, council. So this is a continuation of the draft land use plan adoption. From the last meeting, we just have a couple or maybe three updates to the actual draft document. The first, actually all three occurring, I believe it's on page 19 with the goals section. You all asked at our last meeting to update the goals to no particular order and to further emphasize environmental stewardship at the top of the list. So that's what we did. We moved environmental stewardship at the very forefront of the list. We removed the numbers, so there's no more numbering of the goals, and then we added specific texts underneath those goals saying that they're not listed in any specific order. And so those are the only requested document edits that you all had at the last meeting. I think the conversation left off at the last meeting on, I think the focus is on parcels that are underdeveloped or vacant west of 54 and what to designate those. You saw a map that was presented at the last meeting showing which parcels had the potential if they were rezoned, which again, staff's not recommending. But if they were rezoned, what they would potentially see in terms of allowable density. And so happy to dive back into that and get some, hopefully, final direction from council on that particular issue after Eric reads through the approximate. I think we've got 87 public comments to get through, so happy to talk about that after Eric is done.
Okay. So at this time, we'll go ahead and discuss public hearing comments and how we're going to deal with that, and then we can have a discussion amongst the council. So if you'd indulge me for a second, I would just want to make a statement about the public hearing comments. To be clear, each and every piece of input we receive from our stakeholders is valuable and is considered, whether it arrived by 3:00 p.m. last Friday, by 3:00 p.m. today, or before midnight tomorrow night, or via email, up until we actually vote on this item. We have received, as he just said, 87 submissions by 3:00 p.m. today, and it would take approximately two hours of our council meeting time this evening to read through them all. So I propose that we read 30 minutes tonight per our policy, starting with those received by 3:00 p.m. on Friday, and then in order of receipt until 30 minutes has elapsed. We did make an exception last meeting, and we did read all of them at that time, and we did extend the input period by two weeks in order to further demonstrate how much we do value the input from our stakeholders. And I further propose that we do not vote on the land use plan approval this evening, so the council has the opportunity to read and digest all these many emails and input that we have received. So at this time, I would ask if any council members have an objection or comment on that path forward this evening, which is essentially limiting the public hearing comments being read to 30 minutes. So I'm checking chat now. Okay. I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson with a comment, please.
So I'm just going to agree with what you just said, Mayor. I think that that accurately reflects how council processes the comments and feedback received from the public. So I think you have outlined a good plan forward for tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati, please.
Yeah, I just have a question, since this has literally never happened since I've been on the council. What would we do in a, in a regular meeting, an in-person meeting, if we had an item for discussion and 87 people showed up? Would we limit the comment period to a half hour, or would we extend the comment period? How did you all handle that in the past?
I'd have to defer to staff to know whether or not we've ever cut it short. I think in this case, we probably would have set the expectations earlier. But I'll recognize Town Manager Page.
I agree. My recollection is we've done both. It's been limited and it's been extended. Again, it's always in council's purview to do that.
Okay. Does that address your question adequately, Councilmember Robati?
I, it does address, well, I mean, not really, but I guess I would like to hear from as many people as possible. So could we maybe, most of the communications that we've received, that I've read, were quite short. Could we maybe go two minutes per person and get more people in?
I would lean against that because that's not our stated policy.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
We could maybe go to 45 minutes or an hour if the council is amenable to that. But then we have our policy. I recognize Mayor Protem Johnson at this time.
So I just wanted to add, and Councilmember Robati asked a great question. How would we have handled this if we were all in person? Typically, in a situation like this, we would ask all those that had the same thought to stand so we could visually see from the crowd how they felt. Obviously, we can't do that, but I think, as TJ said earlier, you know, these comments, however they come in, are all incredibly important and valued. And, you know, I know that each one of us is going to read all of these comments, but anyhow, I just wanted to add, that's how we would have handled it if we were in person.
Okay. So seeing no other comments, I want to go forward with that 30-minute plan, and then we will discuss after that whether or not we close the public hearing. That would be the next item to discuss. So Town Clerk Smith, if you would go ahead and set the timer for 30 minutes of comments, limited to three minutes per. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. And to confirm, I will be reading the comments that were received. I will also be reading the comments that were received during the extended period prior to the Friday 3:00 p.m. cutoff that we delivered those comments to council. So those four comments will be included within 30 minutes.
Thank you, sir.
The first comment is from Anita Kapoor, 6457 Kit Creek Road, Morrisville, North Carolina, to the Town Council. To be quite plain, I do not want more development in Morrisville. We have had enough growth already to allow plenty of shopping and convenience. Now is time to dial it back. I do not want more high-density or even more medium-density housing or shopping centers. I certainly don't want developers coming in to build housing and not being required to put at least some of the cost to improve roads to access the developments or educate the children who live in them. I want more green space, more schools for the children who live here but have to go to school elsewhere to be educated in non-pandemic times. I want more roads or improved roads to decrease the crazy traffic we have, especially on Highway 54 and the stretch between Durham and Cary, in terms of regards. The second comment is from Jeff Ammons. I wanted to reach out to you today to state my support for the Business Activity Center designation, including airport overlay amendment allowing residential multifamily along a permanent extension area. As you may be aware, the current WCC campus is approximately 30 acres, and I am actively planning and developing the adjacent 30 acres to double the campus. I believe it is important that this area allows some multifamily to help complete the diversity of our campus. Multi-use developments are important to the town and help us provide communities that support live, work, play, all in one area. The Wake Community College is important to meeting the needs of the local residents, but also important to draw tourism to the area. When teams are deciding which future events to travel to, they will select venues that have a lot to offer outside of the playing surface. The BAC, along with multifamily, will allow us to develop a campus that will be a first-choice destination amongst teams and groups deciding which events to participate in. Additionally, we can create a campus with sports venues, hotel accommodations, family entertainment, restaurants, and other support services for family entertainment, restaurants, and other support services for the guests. To complete our campus, it is important to include multifamily for our workforce to be adjacent to our businesses and generate appropriate density for transit facilities will ultimately help with traffic in our area. I appreciate all your support, and I am glad to provide any additional information. The next comment is from Gregory Patterson, 106 Holly Creek Road. Hello, Town Council. Please find and attach my input for consideration at the February 9 meeting regarding the land use plan. I have had the privilege to speak before you in concert with, and sometimes on behalf of my neighbors from Holly Creek Road regarding the land use plan. My neighbors and I have both met as a group and individually over the last year and a half with planning department staff, members of the Planning and zoning board, and Town Council members. We have attended Planning and zoning board meetings as well as Town Council meetings in person and now virtually. Our message has been consistent. The area that surrounds the Morris West subdivision is changing, as is the neighborhood itself. And we have offered and committed to working together with the Town, PZB Board, and Town Council to ensure that future development of the neighborhood results in a comprehensive and positive impact to the community. Our recommendation from the outset has been that we believe the NAC designation for the entire street is most consistent with the surrounding landscape, is consistent with the spot rezoning that Council approved already for 101 Holly Creek Road, and offers the best chance for a comprehensive solution. Short of what we have pleaded, that at the very least, the entirety of the street be represented in a consistent manner in the land use plan instead of the proposed option of 101 being NAC, 102 and 104 going to general commercial, and the balance of the street moving to MDR. I realize that this is a challenging time for the Town as it weighs the pros and cons of the land use plan, of which Holly Creek Road is just one portion. But it also offers a great opportunity to shape the future of the Town. While I can't speak to the hearts of all the Town Council members, since I have not had the opportunity to personally speak with each member, I know that those that I have had the chance to talk with directly don't take this responsibility lightly. I respect the difficulty of your position. As one Councilmember noted in the January 26 meeting, it is not possible to make everyone happy. I agree with that sentiment, but we look to you to make the hard choices and provide leadership that provides the most benefit to the Town and its residents. You must weigh the input from the consultant, your staff, those directly affected, like my neighbors and I, and feedback from other Town residents who are not directly affected but have an opinion on what happens on our street. I find it somewhat hypocritical that the largest outcry of opposition to our position come from neighborhoods that have been established well after ours and are much larger than ours. Where was the concern in planning when they were developing their large communities? It's ironic that due to their size, they seem to have more of an impact on what happens to our street than we do. I would like to share some additional comments and observations stemming from the January 26 Council meeting. Councilmember Rau asked what the advantage to designating Holly Creek Road as NAC was. Our position has been that establishing that designation will offer the greatest flexibility to developers to bring forth a comprehensive solution. Actually, Councilmember Fender, discussing another area of Town, inadvertently supported the same position when she noted that developers looked to the land use plan as an indication for what type of developments are most likely to be welcomed by the Town. And we have reached the three-minute time limit for that comment. The next public comment is from Elizabeth and Kevin O'Connor, 1001 Henby Ridge Lane. Esteemed members of Town Council, we are writing to express concern with the proposed land use plan. As we read through the proposed land use plan, we see verbiage that the main emphasis of the plan is to, one, proactively seek out opportunities for the creation or preservation of parks and open space; two, enhance the standards for tree protection; three, limit higher-density residential development outside of key strategic areas, guaranteeing increased density; four, refrain from approving new higher-density development without first ensuring nearby infrastructure can support such development; five, continue a strong partnership with the Wake County Public School System; six, establish mixed-use, walkable, transit-supported development within the strategic locations of the transit-oriented development, McCrimmon Extension, and Town Center areas. Yet we don't see that verbiage reflected in the proposed mapping and zoning changes. For example, when we look at the existing land use plan in my area, the northwest corner of Morrisville, we see much land currently marked as parks, recreation, and open space. Yet in the new plan, those areas are now marked as medium-density residential. That is not proactively seeking out opportunities for the creation or preservation of parks and open space. In fact, it's the exact opposite. That also does not enhance the standard of tree protection. Instead, many trees will be cut down under this plan in the area of Town previously noted. This would also not limit higher-density residential, demonstrate a willingness to help Wake County Public School System catch up on significant capacity issues, et cetera. We personally like walking the Shiloh Greenway. To get to it, we must leave our neighborhood, walk along a busy street, and once we finally get in, we are rewarded with a canopy of trees, which, under this new plan, will soon be gone and replaced with a series of parking lots to traverse, as we have already done on the portion of the trail that meets up with McCrimmon. It seems to us from where we live, the plan will remove more trees, diminish the Shiloh Greenway, eliminate the possibility of a small park, increase higher-density residential outside key strategic areas, guaranteeing increased density, et cetera. Please consider more trails in this area of Town and leaving us, please, some trees. Our ask, one, maintain, if not improve, the trail system. For example, please do not replace any more sections of the nature trail with sidewalks and parking lots. Two, develop a small pocket or nature park or nature park in the undeveloped land at the Davis Drive entrance of Kit's Creek. Three, change the UDL to leave a larger tree buffer for future high-density projects. And that's the entirety of that comment. The next comment received is from Beth Lauderdale, 2104 Glade Valley Lane in the town of Morrisville. With regard to the proposed land use plan, I have one word to emphasize to the Town Council: schools. You know about the many capped and overcrowded schools, and I am concerned that this Town Council will be responsible for making the school situation worse. In addition to significant development for the Town Center, transit-oriented development, and McCrimmon areas, there's too much proposed upclassification. In addition to the Town Center, transit-oriented development, and McCrimmon areas, 81 acres are proposed to go from very low-density to medium-density. Also, 235 acres are proposed to go from low-density to medium-density. That is awful. Please scale back to upclassification except for the Town Center, transit-oriented development, and McCrimmon areas. Otherwise, Wake County Board of Education, if you are listening, please remember that the Morrisville Town Council is shooting itself in the foot. The lack of proximate schools and lack of calendar options will be the fault of the Morrisville Town Council. Thank you. The next comment is from Mahel Pareet, 1348 Legendary Lane, Town of Morrisville. I would like to vote to leave the greenwooded areas around Kit Creek as very low-density residential. Thanks. The next comment is from Priya Venad. We do not want the greenwooded areas around Kit's Creek developed into housing. We like more green space, less population, and traffic too, by not developing more here. Thank you for reading. The next comment is from Anita Kapoor. My apologies, this is a duplicate comment. The next comment is from Lisa Siffrin, 6237 Kit Creek Road, Morrisville, North Carolina, to Morrisville Town Council. I am writing as a concerned resident of Kit's Creek neighborhood. My understanding is that the Town is considering further developments in the area around the neighborhood that we previously thought to be very low-density. I urge you, for the sake of the environment and our children, to keep the plan as very low-density for the following reasons. Schools: our schools are maxed out. Two of our base schools are capped, and I'm very concerned about the health and safety of our children if they would have to go back to busing multiple hours per day, which was the case when Kit's Creek was assigned to East Cary Middle School. Additionally, as a dual-working parent family, figuring out additional transportation for our children adds to an already full place. Traffic: we need solutions to our congestion problem before adding more residents. Simply changing to single-family homes does not fully solve the issue. Green space: part of the beauty of Kit's Creek is the green space around that I feel comfortable having my kids explore with some autonomy, much like how I grew up. Continuing to build will harm the environment and take away from the small-town community feel of the neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration. Next comment is from John A. Arvik, 1009 Circadian Court, Morrisville, North Carolina. Dear Council, please reject high-density housing and expanding land development in Morrisville. Please focus on keeping Morrisville beautiful with green space and country feel. If people want concrete and close neighbors, let them live in Apex, Cary, and Holly Springs. Melissa LaFortune, 1817 Henby Ridge Lane and Kit's Creek. I am against the proposal of rezoning the land adjacent to Kit's Creek. Please leave the land as is. We do not have enough schools to support the continued growth throughout this Town, and yet more townhouses and apartments are being developed. The schools we are zoned for and are close to our homes are capped. We have too much traffic with the development as is causing it. Please leave the land as green space. Thank you. The next comment is from Colleen Camacho, 1009 Circadian Court, Morrisville. Please, 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 keep the land around Kit's Creek as green area. Morrisville is getting ridiculous, the schools are full, and the traffic is bad, and more and more houses planned. It was a great place to move to, and that is changing. Next comment from Kamal Khalsaria, 1016 Samora Lane. We do not want the greenwooded areas to be rezoned from very low-density residential to medium-density residential. Town Center, TOD areas, and McCrimmon Quarter comprise enough development. Let these outlier pockets stay zoned as they are now in the land use plan. Please leave the low-density zone as is. We do not want more houses in this area as the schools are overburdened, roads are congested, and amenities are limited. Next comment, Ashak Ganaya, 1817 Glade Valley Lane, Morrisville. Please leave the Morrisville blue-pink zones as very low-density. Next comment, Majorie Riddle, 1013 Game Well Lane, Morrisville. Please leave the zoning as it is. Thank you. Melissa Sturtzel, 6437 Kit Creek Road, Morrisville. To whom it may concern, I urge you to please not upzone the areas around Kit Creek neighborhood that are currently set to very low-density residential. With two young daughters, one in elementary school, and one still in daycare, I'm very concerned about the school caps at the surrounding public schools. They are already overcapacitated. The volume of forecasted new homes in this area is already significant. This contributes to the concerns about school capacity as well as the traffic congestion. There needs to be a cohesive plan that addresses all of these issues. Increasing this zoning will not improve current challenges facing the Town. We love living here, but continue to evaluate our long-term options as we monitor the decisions being made by our local officials. Debbie Farrell, 1061 Glade Rock Lane, Morrisville. I urge you to not support potential zoning changes. There are so many residential neighborhoods, townhomes, and apartment complexes built or under construction. Before approving any zoning changes, it is imperative that we increase the number of schools, update more roadways to accommodate new residents. Additionally, I often hear from out-of-town visitors that they so appreciate the greenery in this area. Please do not ruin it. Rebecca Scott, 6305 Kit Creek Road, Morrisville. I want to express my unequivocal no to any zoning changes. Let me repeat: do not change the zoning to medium-density. We want it to stay very low-density in the areas marked pink and blue on the proposed land use plan. We are already too crowded, we don't have enough schools in Morrisville, and we're relying on towns like Cary to build schools for us. Our base schools are at capacity or very close to it, and there are already thousands of houses in the pipeline. We do not need this overgrowth. Stop catering to developers and listen to your residents. We do not want more traffic, more developments, and more overcrowding. I will say it again: we want to keep very low-density. We are your constituents, not the developers. We live here, not the developers. We deal with the overcrowded schools and lack of sufficient infrastructure, not the developers. Our kids deal with changing school assignments every couple of years, not the developers. Thank you. Steven McMiniman, 1008 Samora Lane, Morrisville. It is important to me that the surrounding area does not get rezoned and redeveloped. Please keep the low-density zoning as is. Thank you. Angela Casey, 1101 Summers Drive in the Kit's Creek subdivision. I would like it to be known that my opinion is strongly against rezoning the areas around our neighborhood from very low-density to medium-density. Our schools are full, the blasting of new construction has caused damage to our houses, and there must be some preservation of green space in this Town. Please, I urge you to not rezon. Kim Shepherd, 1020 Topland Court. As a resident of Morrisville, I implore you to keep the current draft land use plan with natural wooded areas as intended. We do not need to upzone or upclassify for more housing from very low-density to medium-density. Morrisville has too many apartments already. This is leading to more traffic and less school availability for our current students. People will not move here if they do not have the resources most important to them, for example, schools, parks, and ease of movement. Let's keep and maintain Morrisville as a place people want to live. Next comment is from Christopher Champagne. I'm writing to voice my concern regarding the density designation of certain lands around the neighborhood I live in. I understand that the designation is up for change from very low-density to one that may allow a higher-density use. As you all know, the Town of Morrisville is undergoing extremely rapid growth. While that comes with the benefits, we must ensure that accompanying infrastructure is in place prior to allowing that growth. The Town is extremely behind in securing the necessary schools for its residents, and I question why this is constantly overlooked. First, secure the necessary land and schools plans for the Town, then allow the growth to come in around it. Are you not listening to the people who voted for you? Please do. Next comment is from Lee Silverstein. Here we go again. I feel like this is the 4,387th time I've emailed the Town Council about zoning changes around Kit's Creek and Morrisville as a whole. People are so tired of high-density development unless you're a developer. I implore the Council to please, please start listening. You guys routinely put out surveys about land use, planning and zoning, begging for feedback, and then it seems like you move forward and implement whatever you wanted to do anyway. Participation, I've heard, is already low and will become even lower if people continue to feel their voices aren't heard. As a neighborhood... As a neighborhood, we've already talked and had conversations with the council about the zoning of these parcels right outside of our neighborhood and begged that they stay very-low-density residential. And now here they are again, up for change. All over town, I hear friends and acquaintances complaining about yet another townhome or apartment community, and yet every time I turn around, another one is going in. It's nauseating. I know you guys were all elected with the best of intentions at heart and to represent the people of Mooresville. Do you feel like that's what you're doing? Do survey results show that people want more and more tightly-packed communities with tons more traffic and no schools to support them? Please let us know our voices are being heard. Please leave these parcels at low-density levels near Kits Creek and across Mooresville. Please do us right for our town. Please listen. The next comment from Pravjusha Dukpadi, 1118, Otley Bridge Lane, Mooresville. Regarding the land use plan that is proposed, it's our family's opinion that this plan is not in the best interest of our community, especially those with young-school-going children. As you well know, we had to fight to get middle schools assigned to our community. We were being bused far. Why are we putting ourselves in this position again? Our schools are capped. How are you suggesting more homes in this town? I fail to understand why we need it, especially when we have not solved the current capped schools issue. Please help me understand. Whatever may be the reason, our children will suffer with no nearby schools if you go forward with this. We are completely against this proposed plan, the housing part of it only. Please consider our opinion when you make your decision. Thank you. Patty Ripple, 1340, Legendary Lane, Mooresville. Town council members, please listen to your taxpayers. Stop the development of additional housing and start solving issues. We do not have the infrastructure to support more residents. More housing is not adding solutions but contributing to the problems. Contributing to the problems we need solutions for. One, overcrowded schools. Two, traffic congestion and traffic problems. Three, lack of recreation areas and services to our taxpayers. This short-sighted thinking shows a lack of planning on our council's part. Mooresville will never be anything but a bedroom community living off of Cary's community services if you do not take the time to stop developing more housing areas and start planning how to best support the residents that you currently service. Adding more housing and higher-density housing is not supporting your residents. Please leave the zoning as is. The town center, TOD areas, and McCrimmon corridor comprise enough development. Let these outlier pockets, blue and pink, stay zoned as they are now in the land use plan. We need the council to listen to its residents, not pad land developers' pockets. If we continue to add to the traffic congestion, Mooresville will continue to be a place you speed through to get to and enjoy programs and services that the town of Cary holds. Andrea Juliette, 132, Hartsease Lane. Please do not allow any more development around our neighborhood. It is already too congested and crowded. Schools are already overcrowded. Traffic is terrible. We need more green space and trees. The environment of this area is already overloaded. Please no more. This area is headed towards massive overdevelopment. Venkat Seenthasan, 1117, Henby Ridge Lane. I came to know, as a part of the land use plan, we are losing green zones for more very-low-density residential and medium-density residential housing. As you are already aware, we are really suffering with schools capped, calendar option, and long commute to proper schools. Even the roads are currently congested with lots of construction. It is not proper to allow more development without addressing current issues. Town council needs to act based on the quote "of the people, by the people, for the people." In this case, it is acting for only one section of the people, and that's the entire town. I would request that you re-look at your plans and preserve green area within the town. Thank you. Samira Brinkley, 6417, Kit Creek Road. I am writing today to ask you to please not develop any new homes in the green wooded areas around Kit Creek. It lowers the value of our homes, makes the schools more crowded, and brings even more traffic to our ever-changing community, which was once more private. Sumya Santos, 1117, Summers Drive, Mooresville. As a resident of Mooresville, I urge to leave the green spaces in Mooresville as is, and please do not convert them into housing or any other development. We already have enough houses, townhomes, and apartments in the area, Cary and Mooresville. Schools and roads are overfilled, and we do not need additional housing or development. Please leave some green space for breathing. Let's conserve some. Thank you for your attention. By Shali Patel, 6416, Kit Creek Road. I am emailing to request to keep the current draft land use plan with the neutral wooded area as intended. Mooresville has too much housing that's already there and new in the pipeline. Mooresville's schools are capped and not able to support current residents. Students are having to commute farther away. We must look into fixing existing problems like schools and parks before we add more housing. Adding housing will just add more into existing issues Mooresville is facing. I therefore would like to insist and request that we leave the zoning as is. Thank you. Katrina Polito, Kits Creek neighborhood. I am writing to address my concern for the current housing plan for Mooresville, specifically the green wooded areas around Kits Creek. My family does not want this converted into more housing. Ever since we moved here 10 years ago, we have seen more and more natural spaces disappear for housing. If we wanted to live in a city, we would not have moved here. Why do we need to plan for green spaces? Why don't we conserve what we already have? I have children, and I'm very concerned about the school situation. Adding more homes to the mix causes even more issues. Two of our base schools are already capped, and many have had to be converted year-round to accommodate everyone. Traffic is an issue and continues to increase quickly. What should take me 10 minutes in some areas takes me 30 minutes or more because of traffic issues. It seems like housing is the only thing being addressed or seems to be the priority. We need solutions to the above-mentioned issues before adding more housing. In summary, town center, TOD areas, and McCrimmon corridors comprise enough development. Let these outlier pockets stay zoned as they are now in the land use plan. Listen to residents. We've been saying these things repeatedly, yet it seems like the PVB and town staff have not listened to us. We need council members that do. Thank you. And that comment also marks the end of the 30-minute public hearing comments on the
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. At this time, I'm looking for comments from the council about whether or not we should go ahead and close the public hearing as of midnight tomorrow, February 10th, or if there is a desire to leave it open for an additional two weeks. I'd like to recognize Mayor Pretend Johnson, please.
So I'm happy to make a motion when everyone's weighed in, but I would make the motion to close the public hearing tomorrow at midnight. But I would also, so folks still have until tomorrow at midnight to weigh in if they wish. But I would also tell folks that doesn't mean they can't contact council members, and that doesn't mean they can't send in emails past midnight tomorrow.
Right. Up until midnight tomorrow would be public hearings at townofmooresville.com, and after that would be town council@townofmooresville.org. And when I say "com" in the first one, that was incorrect. That was actually also "org". Okay, looking for other comments. Okay, I would recognize Mayor Pretend Johnson to make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close this public hearing tomorrow, February 10th, at midnight.
Thank you, I have a motion. And I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati, please.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Town Clerk Smith, if you'd be so kind as to do a roll-call vote on that
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamello?
Aye.
Councilmember Ral?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Aye.
(laughing).
Mayor Pretend Johnson?
I knew I was coming up next, sorry. Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing as of midnight, February 10th, passing members.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask if council members have any questions for Mr. West.
Actually, while we're waiting, I got an information request earlier from a council member just asking for a list of neighborhoods in Mooresville. You know, we do have a list of neighborhoods in Mooresville, our biannual internal population estimate, so I'm happy to provide that to anyone in case anyone's interested in that list. Just wanted to throw that out there for you.
Okay, and if you could email that to all of us, I guess, that would be great, and perhaps add it to the agenda packet information, so it's on our next agenda. That'd be helpful as well. Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to open up for discussion on the land use plan adoption. As I noted earlier, and I didn't hear any objections, that we will not be voting on this tonight, but it's another opportunity to go ahead and have good discussion and share our thoughts. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati, please.
There was an email that we did not get to during the public comment, but it was received sometime, I believe, yesterday or this afternoon. And the writer said something to the effect of, "Why are we going to zone things with density residential if we're saying," I had said to this person or to someone that told him, "that that's not what we want? That connotes a lack of integrity." And I have to tell you that I've come around to feeling that that person may be right. And I'm wondering if there is some way that we can get to consensus on leaving the parcels that are currently zoned as low-density residential or very-low-density residential, because we have no intention of changing the zoning on those parcels. And to me, to put out a land use plan that says that we're willing to accept medium-density residential there when we are absolutely not, like, I'm not going to vote for anything for any new development on this side of Mooresville, like, I'm just not. And so I just wonder if there's, if we could drill a path to consensus, maybe by leaving those areas that we honestly do not have any intention of upzoning, leaving them the way they are, but maybe carving out a few places like Holly Creek, which could be medium-density residential or even Neighborhood Activity Center. And, you know, I just think that, I mean, we might have to revisit the plan in five years instead of 10, or we might have to rezone when it's appropriate, but the fact is, we don't have schools and we don't have roads that will support what's in this plan. And I'm sorry, Brad, because I know you just want to kill me right now, but I don't know, that comment about integrity really struck me, and I, I don't know, I can't, I somehow can't get past it. So I just thought that maybe that would be an option. Thank you. Follow-up question, does Brad know where I live?
Well, one thing, I remember, so yeah, we did discuss this in length back in October. It seems like the main hang-up is what to do with these parcels west of 54 that are either vacant or underdeveloped. The current plan recommends, or is designating these areas as medium-density residential. And what that's saying essentially is that if they were, if a development application were to be submitted, this is essentially the maximum density that we would even entertain, not guaranteeing that we would even approve a development, but medium-density is the maximum that we could even conceivably approve if a potential development came at some point in time. It doesn't guarantee a timing or a timeframe either. It could be, you know, five years, 10 years, whatever. But it just kind of sets the stage for, "Don't even bother showing up if you have something higher than that." Back in October, we had a proposal to maybe, there could be some comfort level with medium-density if we could hone in on single-family detached. And there was a pitch to, okay, well, let's have a separate designation for those areas that, you know, we, you know, medium-density might be feasible and acceptable in certain situations, but we want to make sure that it's single-family detached. And so we showed you a map that showed you areas that could be delineated with this new or either district or at least a simple crosshatch that said, "In these areas, single-family detached is preferred." And at the time, the majority of council was not interested in that, and so we moved on, and that was our direction. But, I mean, we're happy to, if that, if this is a compromise that can get folks more comfortable with medium-density as shown, happy to mark the plan. If that doesn't get folks to where they want to be and they want to see certain parcels shown as low-density, we can do that as well. Just trying to find a compromise between the folks on council who want, who are open to townhomes and then those who aren't. So this would be sort of more or less allowing for that density that we hear is sort of the threshold that developers need to build things, or at least that's what they claim, and that's the predominant housing type of Mooresville is. But ensuring that any application that comes in that isn't single-family detached can be easily dismissed by that language in the plan and the actual marking of the plan. So happy to do either one. The thing is, we just need final decision on this, is all I would request.
Councilmember Robati, any follow-up question or statement on Mr. West's comment?
I don't think so, Mayor. I'd like to hear from the rest of council about what they're thinking about the plan.
Thank you. Councilmember Fender, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that, given the amount of comments that were received, I don't know if it was May or October where we had all the comments and they were put into a spreadsheet for us, given the amount of comments that we got at that time that were very strong in favor of green space and reiterated the same message that our residents have been giving all along. I mean, even from the beginning of the development of this land use plan, is documented in the verbiage of the land use plan, that there was a lot of concern from the very beginning about maintaining tree canopy, maintaining green space, concern about schools, concern about our roads. The message from our residents has been consistent from the very beginning of the land use plan development. The message from our residents has been consistent from the very beginning of the land use plan development. We heard it at the, during your workshops, we heard it throughout this past year when we asked for public comments, we heard it during our last meeting from the public comments, and we heard it tonight. The message has been consistent over, you know, even multiple years, that there's a big concern about tree canopy, green space development. I think, you know, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Robati's suggestion. I'm not sure why the land use plan decided to designate those particular areas, like around Kitts Creek, behind Breckenridge, along Church Street. I don't understand why those were even considered to be medium-density from the beginning. I'm definitely in favor of leaving those parcels of land as they are now, either as low-density or very-low-density. We're already going to have plenty of multifamily homes and townhomes along the McCrimmon Extension. We're going to have it in town center. We're going to have the apartments in all of the T O D space. I think that is quite enough. We need to listen to our residents. They are giving us a very consistent message. And we need to listen to them. We, we're not here for developers, we're here for our residents. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'm going to share some thoughts and then recognize Councilmember Rao. So I feel that the urgent purpose of this update is the three sub-areas, T O D, Town Center, and McCrimmon Extension. In order to provide clear guidance and our vision for these three areas, I think updates are actually required for them to be successful and for development community to understand what we're looking for there. Other parts of town, as Justin said, I believe, are developing faster than our infrastructure can be built to sustain our current quality of life. I thank staff for bringing forth the Flum Zoning Change Analysis Map, which visually conveys those areas being considered for more dense land use designations. I strongly believe it is, that it is in the best interest of current and future residents for these zones to remain as they are, rather than giving development community the indication that we would welcome additional density. I, for one, would not. Our infrastructure is already overstrained. These more-dense designations set up circumstances which may lead to us falling even further behind on schools, roads, and parks and open space. Our residents have made it very clear what they hope for years and this past week in response to seeing the visual representation of what is being considered. And have made it very clear that they would like this council to leave those areas under current designation. So our residents understand very well our challenge, and I do not see any downside of keeping the existing land use plan designations guardrail in place. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Colley. Well, Brad, I had one comment, a question for you, but I'm going to, it's regarding the trans air drive request we had. But if you could answer that about changing line after everybody else has given their comments, it's more of an administrative thing. We've got a request from Sivas Shah about that, and I want to sort of see what our options are. Well, first of all, I just want to thank all the citizens who have engaged with us and met with us in different HOA meetings. And my thoughts are, as I've gone through a lot of the emails, and I've read through and met a lot of people across the town, I definitely share the concern about not having the adequate infrastructure for schools and roads. And I sense that there's a real fear among many citizens, and I keep hearing this referral to upzonings. And it concerns me because I think there's a lot, there's a lot of confusion. And when I say this, I'm speaking to the citizens of Morrisville all across the town. So we have over 60-plus neighborhoods, and I hear from a lot of those residents across the town on a number of different issues. And so, and we all do. And the first, the first problem is I think there's a confusion between land use and zoning. So one of the things that I think should be emphasized is that if we have a land use plan, the zoning doesn't change. So even if it were to be changed into recommending something, and Brad, please correct me if I'm wrong, recommending that medium-density or preferred single-family detached, we would not be required to do that. So it's not an upzoning. So one of the things that I'd like to consider is, you know, could we have a percentage of that 318 acres preserved? Could we work with some of these communities that are concerned, and Kitt Creek and others, about having some designated space for park space? Or, you know, to not have all these homes, because that's what the citizens are afraid of. They're afraid of, well, you're going to, you know, have this land use plan, developers are going to come in, and they're going to, they're going to rezone. But, so that's one question, as I think my comments, Brad, I'd like you to address to everybody on the council, is, you know, how do we encourage and show the citizens that we can rein in on the development? Now, I know that we can enforce conditions and we can do those things if we have medium-density. Okay, so the second point, from a policy perspective, as we're representing all the 34,000 citizens of Morrisville, I also, it's important to me of affordable housing. And if we completely eliminate medium-density residential as a component, I believe that in the long-term future of the town, we could be denying firefighters and police and teachers and our own staff affordable housing. So I think that's something that we need to consider of in the policy. And so, you know, I think we have to weigh these issues in, and then I could go on and on. But my final point I want to make that I've been researching, and I've heard some comments today about tree preservation, is just to remind my colleagues on the council that there is, there's a real misconception out there that, that if we lower the density, we're going to cut down fewer trees. And the state legislature prevents us from regulating clearcutting for single-family detached housing. And Councilor Frank Gray, you can weigh in on that, but that, my understanding of it and research on it is that sometimes even multifamily and other options would give us a chance to preserve more trees. So I just want to say that for the public, because there's this perception out there that, you know, by reducing, by having more density, that we're going to cut down more trees. But with all that being said, this is a really, really tough decision. And I, I feel so concerned that the citizens feel like we're not listening to them. And we are listening to them, but if we don't have the votes to keep it all low-density residential, I feel that, you know, someone challenged Ann Robati's integrity. And first of all, Ann, you're one of the most integrous people I know, so don't you ever be afraid of having integrity. But I think we don't have integrity if we would vote down a land use plan just because we're afraid of what could happen in the future, of things that we can't control. I think we need to think about all the 34,000 citizens at the same time, addressing some of the concerns. And I reiterate, I want to thank the people that have reached out to us, that have showed us maps. I totally get it, I totally understand. And I'm looking for a win-win here, right? Because 10, 20 years from now, when I'm an old man, I want to know that we, we did the right thing to pay the future, right? So I just want to set that, I just want to set the framework, Brad, and I threw a lot out there, but I want to give everyone else a chance to talk. But this isn't as easy a decision as everyone's saying, but there's a difference between land use and zoning. And I see that, I see this, this, there's misinformation out there, because the public thinks that if we approve this plan, that we're automatically going to upzone every district in Morrisville. And that is simply not true. And I'm not going to make a decision like that. That's it.
I can answer now or wait for?
Whatever, whatever the mayor wants. I threw a lot out there, so.
Yeah, I think it'd be best if Brad were to address that right away, and then we'll recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you.
I heard a lot, so I'll try to unpack some of that. So basically, you're right in the fact that most of these areas that we're discussing tonight fortunately happened to be zoned very-low-density or low-density. So the chances of someone applying for rezoning to develop these parcels are pretty high. They're almost guaranteed based on the calls that we get from developers. They tell us, the developers say that, you know, it's due to the land costs and the infrastructure costs in Morrisville and they're a median area, that medium-density is sort of the bottom line that they could possibly get away with. And then they even give us more grief that, you know, they really are looking for higher density. And, you know, they could do single-family there, but it would have to be, you know, higher-density lots and narrow lots. So we originally painted these, or the consultants painted these medium-density residential as a sort of compromise between the folks that didn't want anything whatsoever, and then, which is unconstitutional. And then the folks that want high-density residential to make their bottom line work, mainly the development community. And so medium is sort of that sweet spot that we came to an agreement on in October and we stuck with based on your feedback. But you're right in that with the conditional rezoning process, you're able to negotiate the character of development, how certain things look. It's purely, you know, if you want to dedicate some park space, dog park, whatever, those are all things that can be discussed. Now, it's fully voluntary, developers have to agree to that. So you get into some sort of fully transparent voluntary negotiation with all conditional rezonings. And best of all, you have to see a site plan. So they are required to send a conceptual site plan of what they're intending to build. So unlike a general rezoning, conditional rezonings, you get to see exactly what's going to be, or almost exactly what's going to be on the ground. So that's one way to guarantee some sort of open space, green space, whatever. The other way is something that we've said multiple times, and I'll say it again, is that the land needs to be purchased either by the town or another private party, HOA, nonprofit, whatever, to ensure that it is, it stays bucolic, it stays rural, stays open space, whatever you want it to be, undeveloped, for lack of a better term. That is the only way we can, we can do that. We've said this multiple times, we cannot designate private property as open space or parks unless we have a commitment at least, at the very least, to purchase that or move on that property. And so that's, those are really the only two ways legally that we, or the third way, the property owner voluntarily proposes a conservation easement of some kind. And they can relinquish their development rights, you know, to have their property land banked. And there's, I think there's one in the triangle that is willing to do that. And I don't know if, I suspect most of these property owners wouldn't want to do that, but that is also a third option. So hopefully I answered.
Well, yeah, so just as a quick follow-up, I mean, I think that playing devil's advocate, the citizens are concerned of like, you know, if we, if we have a land use plan, it's going to encourage more development, and that we're going to put people in that process. So we do have more control in terms of the conditions, but perhaps we could have a period of time where we work. Because all the emails and comments I heard today were concerned about schools and traffic, and that we're growing too fast. So we can slow that growth down, even if we approve the plan, right?
Correct, yeah.
But we're being asked to just keep it, all the 318 acres low-density residential, and all options are on the table for me. But then the downside of that is that that could really hurt us down the road, right? With like affordable housing and some of these other things that we want to do.
So, yeah, I mean, just to put it frankly, if you in your heart of hearts, and this is for every councilmember, believe that those parcels are, should and will likely stay low-density residential from here until the next 10 to 20 years, then you should support low-density residential. If you think there's a chance that some project may come along that could pique your interest that's medium-density, then you should support medium. If you want to hibernate the two where there's some sort of middle ground where it's medium, but you want to make sure it's single-family detached, we can do that as well. We just need final direction on that. And one thing I'll say is I, I'll listen to a lot of comments, and unfortunately, even though we say it multiple, multiple times, the land use plan does not recommend upzoning any of those parcels. There's no upzoning recommended, there never was, there never will be. That is, we'll put that to rest. So whatever social media posts or emails you're getting that say we're going to upzone, it's not true. It is simply just showing you a potential increase if the application were submitted. This is, you know, let's say it's medium-density, this is the absolute max that we'd even consider. And even then, you can just simply say no. If the timing's not right, if, let's say you, you want more infrastructure in place before that development comes in, all you got to do is just say no. You have full control of that. So I just want to clarify that for the folks listening at home.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody that has sent in our, you know, sent a comment from our hearing, outside of the hearing, has reached out to us and had a conversation, had a Zoom meeting. There's just been a lot of different ways that we've received information and feedback about this plan. And this plan that we're looking at today is of particular interest to me because it represents the plan that we're going to have as we near the build-out of our town. We have very, very few non-developed parcels in Morrisville. So we have to be extremely careful on how we vision for our future. And I hear the businesses that are looking at the McCrimmon Corridor and very concerned about how we craft that vision. I hear residents across our town that are concerned about that vision. And it's important to the council, as well as all the stakeholders, that we do the best we can for the town. With that said, I always have had a vision that we would have a diversified land use where we have the ability for someone to live their entire lifetime in Morrisville if they would choose. We need a variety of businesses and residents so that people can, from the time that they're young, grow up in a home and start a new home and maybe go into a bigger home and then downsize. We need to kind of keep that idea in our heads as we plan for different uses of the land. One of the things that Morrisville did several years ago when they did the U D O is they upzoned. They actually rezoned the town, and they eliminated the agricultural category. And that meant that no farms would be existing anymore in the town. And to me, that was kind of sad, and they converted those lands into very-low-density residential. Well, today, it is my understanding, and Brad, you know, please correct me if I'm wrong, the undeveloped land that we have in Morrisville is either very-low-density residential or low-density residential. But in this plan, we are reassigning the categories to medium-density residential. And if this plan, as it stands today, is adopted, we would no longer have undeveloped, very-low or low-density residential.
You'd have the zoning in place, like, so the very-low-density?
Right, but the.
Future land use designations would be medium, correct?
Right. So I'm not really clear why we have to rush to raising that intense use across the town if we're trying to keep a diverse land. I'm not all or nothing. I'm not like, do it all this way or do none of it this way. I still want to balance. I still want to have opportunities of different densities, of different price points, so that we have that balance of options for different types of homes. And as, speaking of that, as you know, I am a proponent of affordable housing. There is language in this plan, in the T O D East, that specifies workforce housing as one of the elements it would like to incorporate. And workforce housing can mean apartments, it can mean ownership, like townhomes or ownership of single-family homes. And that's important to have that option in place for our residents. The one thing I am disappointed about in this plan is we do not have language in this plan designating affordable or workforce options in the town center. We've talked about this in meetings, but it's not written into the plan as it is in the T O D East. The other area where affordable housing, we've discussed, has been in the McCrimmon Corridor, and one of the major stakeholders in. Corridor and one of the major stakeholders in, um, the airport, um, RDU Authority has cautioned us, again, introducing affordable, uh, housing products, um, in the airport overlay due to federal regulations. So, that means we only have, at this point, two possible areas that we really specified or, or conversed about affordable options. So, where else could we look? And the medium housing, medium-density housing product, um, does offer some affordability in having both a townhome and a single-family home as an option. So, to me, I don't, um, support stripping out townhomes from the definition of medium-density residential. I think we should need to leave that as it is. And if we don't want townhomes, we either identify it as low-density residential or we, um, accept that maybe the products that are medium-density residential brought forward should not have as many townhomes as, uh, single-family homes. Somehow, we can work out, maybe through zoning and conditions, a mix that would be acceptable to everybody. So, um, that's kind of the highlights of where my thinking is at this point, but I'd like to continue this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Vertem Johnson, please.
So, I'll, I'll try not to repeat, um, a lot of things that have just been said, but there, there is one, one item that is worthy of repeating, and I think several of you've just said it. Um, what we are discussing here has nothing to do with zoning. Well, that's not fair, that's not fair. It has, it, um, it is not changing the zoning. Let me cha- cha- correct my words. Nothing changes, even if this plan, in whatever form it gets adopted, nothing changes. There, there needs to be that rezoning that comes into play. And, and I have said this often over the years, our rezonings are becoming more difficult as they should be. Our rezonings are turning out to be conditional-use rezonings that require lots of conditions and would actually address many of the things that we're hearing from folks. I hear, I hear everyone when they talk about traffic congestion and then our road network is not, um, is not the way it, it needs to be. There are conditions we can place on rezonings to actually require even more road improvements than we are, um, that are ne- even more road improvements that are necessary. With conditional-use rezonings, we can put on conditions that require greenways to be built and enhance buffers with enhanced tree canopy and parks and, and parkland payment in Lew. Those are all the things, um, that we, we have the potential to, to do and address when we, when we go to rezoning and these conditional rezonings. So, I hear, um, the concerns from the public. They are, are concerns too, every one of us on council. We hear, um, the traffic congestion issues and, um, th- this conditional rezoning is just one method of how we can address some of that, um, moving forward. And, and we've, we've used it in the past too, um, to, to help with these issues. We're, we, we talk a lot about vision and I really, this is really important to me. The vision of the council is not just a map in the land use plan. It is not just the land use plan alone. The, the vision runs across multiple adopted plans that council has. I, I do not deny that the land use plan is important, but that's just one plan. We have an adopted transportation plan that addresses our traffic issues. We also have a Parks and Rec master plan that addresses the need or talks about the need for, um, additional parkland and the amenities that we want, like more greenways and, um, and such. So, this, when we talk about a vision, it's not just this plan. This plan only has, or not only, but this plan addresses some of the potential and they are potential uses that we may see. And, and so, one thing that's also really important for me is that I be as honest and as truthful to the citizens as I can be. And to keep all of these properties that we're talking about here, very low-density residential, when they butt up in, in many cases, to development that's already even denser, um, that's already medium-density or even denser, I, I, I'm not being truthful if I, if I tell the public that this, and I'm, I'm just, I'm not speaking on one particular property, but if a property, if we're going to leave it as very low-density residential, I, I've got to believe that it's going to stay that way and be truthful with the public. If it's butting up against other higher-density, medium-density.
You've been muted. To unmute yourself, press star six.
For that property. And I need to, I need to be truthful about that and, and share that. Doesn't mean this property is going to be developed in a year, in two years, in five years or 10 years. I know for a fact, the property that we're all talking about behind Kids Creek will not be developed for decades. Um, the, the landowners are not interested in doing anything with their property. So, so I guess I, I just want to make sure that everyone is, um, just knows that this plan doesn't change anything tomorrow. What it does though, is it lays the groundwork for the council and our staff to work on the next steps that are, quite frankly, is equally important, which is our UDO updates. That's where the devil's in the details. That's where we can, we can specify specifics that we want to see. The specifics are not here in this plan that we're looking at right now. They're to come. And that's why the adoption of this plan in whatever form we end up is critical so that we can move into the next stage with, which is to really delve into the details of, of, of what we want to see as far as the uses and, um, and the descriptions around those uses. So, um, I, I guess that, that it's really important, number one, nothing happens tomorrow. There are many, many steps that, that, um, need to take place before anything is developed. And, and the vision is, is, is more than just this plan. It is multiple plans and, you know, council has adopted the Parks and Rec master plan and the transportation plan and are, and are behind those improvements, um, moving forward. So, th- those are all my comments right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Caramella, please.
Uh, thanks, Tijia. Um, I want to touch upon, you know, many of the letters that I've been hearing is a constant saying of lack of infrastructure. And that's where I have a little bit of a heartburn. And I want to understand, you know, from my point of view, you know, and from obviously from the council point of view, that, uh, we are doing everything possible. Uh, for example, you know, questions have been raised about, you know, uh, public safety. You know, uh, when we heard that Fire Station Two was in jeopardy and, you know, with 54 expansion, we, none of the pe- uh, people, you know, there was no one in the council who opposed it. We immediately got the new land for it and, um, it was around $2.2 million. We, we funded it and then again spent $500,000 for the design plan. We bought one more piece of property next to, you know, Wake Tech and that design will be used for there. And we are funding, uh, like, you know, at least the first one and then second one when it is needed. So, that takes care of, you know, the fire, you know, the fire chief has come back again and again saying that when we have this, our coverage will improve significantly. And, and I take their judgment, um, the best way, uh, to proceed. And then let's talk about roads. You know, six years in the council, uh, five, uh, you know, we have done great progress. Uh, we have Marshall Parkway, uh, McRimmon Parkway extension that has completed. The Lewis Stevens is getting done. We are starting Marshall Carpenter. The development on, you know, aviation and airport at 40 interchange is getting developed. We are already funded for McRimmon Flyover. We invested a million dollars for aviation and, uh, it's in our plan where, uh, we want that flyover too to, you know, mitigate the traffic on 54. So, things are working, uh, and but it is slow. We know the DOT underfunding, uh, so, uh, I need to make sure that people understand that things are going on that side. Yes, will that help alleviate all the traffic concerns? Answer is no. But, that's the best that we are doing. We have a $35 million budget and we are trying everything to squeeze out of it and get four to five times more from our external partners to do it. And now let's talk about parks. You know, Bond is a perfect place. You know, we have just renovated, uh, the MAFC. We are dedicated for Marshall Carpenter Phase Three, uh, Community Center there. And then the Bond, we, I am like, waiting for the Bond so that we can buy some land for park space. So, so, uh, that, that is my promise because that's one of the things in the Bond, I want to see, you know, how much we can dedicate and guy, uh, buy some land. We have, with all opportunities that were presented to us, we have been buying land, you know, and in one of the meetings said that we have a closed session almost every other, you know, month, and we are buying every opportunity. We have bought land around, uh, you know, downtown area. We have bought land, you know, near the Church Street. And every opportunity we get, we are negotiating, we see it's the best value for money and we are doing it. We are not leaving anything saying we are lack of money. So, so I want the residents to understand that things are getting worked. Yes, the fruitfulness of that will take some time, but we are already started investing on it, uh, on it big time. And unlike the land use plan that was previously done, I think the lessons learned from last time, uh, was after they did the land use, they also did, um, town-wide rezoning. And that was a big heartburn for me too. When I started on the council, I was getting these applications which are already in NAC and apartment complexes are coming. So, pretty much I felt my hands were tied. There's nothing I could do and, but the lessons learned from there is now, like, uh, we are not rezoning any of the land use other than, you know, McRimmon bypass on, and certain TODs that we are talking about. And that too, there will be a lot of restrictions, uh, from what I've heard from Michelle and Brad, like, you know, there will be a plan that comes before the zoning, the amount of restrictions of what needs to go there, how it needs to go there, uh, that will all be chucked on into the plan. So, this, so we are putting all the balances that we can do and these are all based on the inputs that we get and the mistakes are, you know, lessons learned from the previous experiences. So, so obviously it is, you know, an ongoing process and, uh, I, I, I hope like, you know, people understand that. And I totally get it from the school point of view. I'm a perfect example. My son was, you know, uh, debunked three times from one, you know, he was planning to go to Cedar Fork, had to go to Green Hope Elementary, went ready to go to Mel's Park, you know, he didn't get in there, so I had to finally get him to Coronage and now at Anlo. So, so, uh, I hear it and it is ongoing. And, uh, our town has really stepped up, working with the Wake County Schools, and the citizens have been equally engaged. So, it's an ongoing process. So, I, I, I feel it's not like they can solve the issue overnight, neither we can solve the issues overnight, but the dialogue and communication is on there. So, that's, that's where I, I am looking at it, like, you know, many a times I feel, um, either like the understanding, especially like has been already repeated many times about the underlying, you know, land use versus rezoning and clearcutting or having green space. I just wanted to put it out there that, um, I would not be comfortable myself, you know, till I see some of the things which are already going and that they are going in the right direction. Thanks, Tijia.
Thank you, Councilmember Caramella. At this time, uh, everyone's had a chance to weigh in and add to this discussion. Uh, we're going to start the second round now, um, and hopefully we'll get to a little bit of direction to staff before we take a break. Um, we'll see how it goes. So, first, uh, Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Body, and then myself. Councilmember Fender.
Yeah, I don't know where to begin. I mean, this is exactly why the residents feel that we are not listening to them. We just had eighty-some public comments read to us. I guess there wasn't, um, all eighty read to us. Um, but we just received eighty-seven comments in addition to the hundreds of comments, um, last week and throughout this entire, um, endeavor. And, and the council is, is dismissing them, throwing them out the window. Our residents are not stupid. They, um, they, to them, I mean, in fact, we don't have a term for what we're using in the land use plan as the category. So, when they talk about zoning, it's interchangeable with the categories in the land use plan. They are not confused. They, our residents are highly intelligent individuals and they're not stupid. They, we don't have a term for what we're calling these categories in the land use plan. And, um, you know, there's nothing to say that if we, uh, in the land use plan, leave a parcel of land as low-density, there's nothing to say that the, I mean, using your own argument, there's nothing to say that developer can't come and apply for rezoning for that parcel of land, um, to, to be used for something else. And if the land by Kit, K- Kids Creek, um, is not going to be developed for decades, then why would, in the land use plan, would you put it as medium-density? Uh, you know, why not leave it as low-density? If we're truly listening to our residents, we would leave that parcel of land as low-density along with the others. I mean, our current residents did not want the townhomes there along Church Street because Church Street can't handle the additional traffic. Our schools can't handle the additional kids. So, why would we allow additional townhomes on those parcels along, along Church Street? And when we talk about affordable housing, it is not Morrisville's duty to provide all of the apartments that are needed in the Triangle area. We're already going to allow apartments along McRimmon Extension and then the TOD. It is not Morrisville's duty to allow apartments on every single undeveloped parcel of land. Um, I don't know. I'm frustrated because, um, I am just baffled why the town council, um, doesn't seem to be moved by all the, the comments that we're receiving by. doesn't seem to be moved by all the, the comments that we're receiving by, from the public. Um, it seems like we are giving too much weight to the developers, to the consultants, to the de- develop this plan that don't live in Morrisville. It's like the tail wagging the dog. Um, this is our land use plan. This is our vision. Um, I just think if we don't change something soon, we're just going to get more of, of what we have. And that, and what we have is going in a trajectory that is leading us to, um, a town whose quality of life will decrease and people are going to be moving out of here. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Robdy, please.
Um, well, that was great, Donna. I agree with most of what Donna just said, so I won't repeat it all. But I did want to, uh, follow up on something from Councilmember Garamella, which was, um, which was about the bond. Because we do have a Parks and Rec, um, plan that says that we need, I want to say, a hundred and fifty more acres of parkland. I don't know the exact number, but a large amount of parkland. And I did, uh, Councilmember Garamella mentioned the bond. And people that are concerned about tree canopy, about preservation of natural resources, about parks, we can't designate that stuff in the land use plan. I know that's been said, but I'm saying it again. So if that is your concern, you are going to want to vote for that bond and encourage your neighbors to do the same because we have already committed that we'll use some of that bond money to purchase land, to turn it to parks and leave as open spaces. So I did just want to mention that. I, you know, I, the more I think about whether this plan reflects my vision for Morrisville, I don't want to have to tinker around with zoning and rezoning and, and the UDO. I want this plan to be what our shared vision for Morrisville is. And the more that I think about that, the more I think that we need to specify that we, you know, we're not entertaining housing projects right now i- on this side of Morrisville. I don't actually see what's so terrible about that. We can't possibly be the only small town that wants to slow our development. So, thank you, Mayor. That's what I have.
Thank you. Um, I just had a couple of points. Um, what I heard Brad say earlier is that there's already a lot of interest in these parcels which are being considered in the land use plan to move from low density or very low density to medium density. Um, he said that we'll be getting applications right away. So we're, when we're talking about nothing's going to change tomorrow, it's actually right at our door. It sounds like the developers are knocking on the door and once the land use plan is approved, any of those medium densities, we're going to start getting applications. And I don't think that's the direction that I want for the town. As, uh, Councilmember Robdy said, I don't think that we need to race to develop more of our land right now. The three sub areas I think are going to meet a lot of the needs of the pressure of Wake County throughout and our business community. Um, and to go beyond that, I think, uh, digs a hole deeper. That's getting us into trouble. Um, there's the note that the developers, and it was just mentioned that, um, they can always, they are already asking to go from MDR to apartments, to high-density residential. So if we leave everything the way it is, nothing's going to stop them from going ahead and making these applications. Um, and I think it would be easier for us to say no, our infrastructure isn't cut up, if we leave them as they are, LDR or VLDR. Uh, the Kits Creek parcels were mentioned, they're the light blue. Um, it's my understanding that the owners of those parcels actually wanted to stay that way. And it was mentioned by another council member that they don't plan on developing that for decades. So once again, why would we want to go ahead and show an upzone, an up dense, a density increase designation on the land use plan? If that's not really what we're expecting to happen or what we want to happen or even the owner wants to happen. Um, and to, uh, piggyback on what was said by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, I too feel it's really important for us to provide housing stock for families throughout their lifecycle of their, uh, just a, a young couple, a family, and then, uh, older people who are looking to downsize. And that's why I feel that it's really important to preserve some land, uh, as current designations. And if it's built, it'll be built as per right. But anything else beyond that, it'd be important to have some land. So when the sub areas are done, we will know what we're missing in our housing stock. And then we can appropriately designate those land parcels. We can change them then and then we'll get exactly what we need for buildout. Right now, if we upzone them, if we change the land use designations, we're running concurrently with a lot of apartments. And we're going to end up without very much else. So I think people in order to go through their entire lifecycle, they won't be able to stay within Morrisville and keep their families within Morrisville. So those are some of my concerns. Um, that is why I feel very strongly that I hope that this council will strongly consider leaving the land use designations as they are outside of the three sub areas. Um, I see that Mayor Pretend Johnson would like to make comment. I'd like to recognize her now.
So, um, I'm going to echo Councilmember Fender. I am frustrated too. Um, I think it is, um, deeply concerning and deeply unfair to make the comment that, um, the rest of your fellow council members are dismissing the residents and that, um, we're not moved by what they're saying or care about what they're saying. And, and I want to be the first to say that is absolutely not true. And I do not believe that of, of Councilmember Fender or anybody else on this council. I, I think we take everything we hear to heart. I think we do our, our darn best to incorporate all the different views and to make sure that we address them as best we can within the authority and the powers that we have. So I want the public to know, um, that no one on this council, no one on this council is dismiss- dismissing their concerns. No one. We all live here too and are as concerned as everybody else. And we are balancing this as best we can and we are each doing the best we can. I believe that one hundred percent. So I, I want the, the public to know that and I want that notion to stop right here and right now. Because that is very unfair. I, I also, um, and maybe this will help, um, I was going to make a couple of suggestions, but, but maybe this will help. The, the type of projects that I'm looking at for the future that I would entertain, um, would be projects like a senior living facility, whether that be, um, um, bungalows, single-family homes, um, or even an incorporation of townhomes. I, I would want to see that come forward. And, and if we, if we have a land use plan that doesn't even give an inkling of, of indication that we would potentially consider something like that, then those projects are not going to come forward. I actually think a senior facility would be, um, a detached, single-family or townhome senior facility would do well in this town and be successful. And, and that's something I'd like to see. So I, I want to make sure however the land use plan ends up, that we don't discourage a development like that. I, I also don't want to discourage, um, someone like Habitat for Humanity who is, is, is looking, um, to do development in Western Wake County, but because of land prices, and we all know how expensive land here, here is in Morrisville, we all know how our, the price of our homes has increased, um, e- even, even recently under the pandemic. Um, so Habitat for Humanity is, is looking to, to townhouse communities. And, um, they've recently done a successful one, albeit very small. Um, I'm talking very small. It was only a, a handful of units. Um, I, I, I think that might fit somewhere here in Morrisville. So I, I want the public and I want the rest of my council members to hear. Those are the types of projects I would, I would absolutely entertain. I, I, I am not looking to put any more apartments west of fifty-four. This plan does not allow for apartments anywhere west of fifty-four. And, and you've heard me say before, I, I am, I'm concerned about the number of apartments that may be out in the MacCrimmon area. And, um, and, and I'm going to keep my eye on that. So, um, I, I want to make sure that, that's, that's out there. I also want, um, you know, as we talk about the Kits Creek, um, the property that butts up against, um, Kits Creek at the, at five forty. I had the pleasure of, of speaking to the property owner. We had a great conversation, a long conversation. And I, I would suggest that we leave that one as very low-density residential. I, I, I don't see that moving, that property moving anytime soon. Um, um, so I'll throw that out there. And then I, I would ask for Anne. Anne had a suggestion early on and I, I'm not sure that I, um, I wrote it all down right or got it right. So I would ask her to, um, or Councilmember Robdy to repeat her, uh, suggestion that she had earlier on tonight.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robdy. I think she talked about leaving most alone and some change in Holly Creek, if I recall.
I said that if the concern is that we won't have units that we can designate as affordable housing, that maybe what we can do is to leave the current designations the way they are, with the exception of Holly Creek, which we could designate on the land use plan, maybe not necessarily changing the zoning, but designate on the land use plan as Neighborhood Activity Center. That would get us some, some potential development that we could, could put some affordable housing in, but would also allay the, would also make us more responsive to the, the voices of the residents who are saying that they don't want, they, they want most of that land to stay the way it is. And I think that would be kind of a, kind of a compromise there. So, uh, thanks for bringing that up, Liz.
Mayor Pretend, did you want to circle back with that and then I'll recognize Councilmember Row?
No, I, I think Councilmember Robdy, thank you. Uh, it gives us all food for thought, so I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Row, please.
Yeah, I had a quick question for Brad on the administrative issue, but I, I like that idea of, you know, looking at the Neighborhood Activity Center, opening up our options there. So Brad, if we could take a look at that. And then the other question I had is, you know, yeah, as we look at balancing the housing stock, you know, would there be a way of, you know, of the, of this, these areas outside the sub parcel, preserving some of those, uh, as low-density residential? Like the one area that Mayor Pretend Johnson mentioned here, Kit Creek, right? Um, so we can allay some of these concerns. Uh, you know, I, I don't know whether it's something we can do, but, but I just, I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, and, um, something to think about, you know. So we can show the citizens that we're listening to some of their concerns, that we want to slow some of that development down, but at the same time, not being able to keep whole thing low-density residential, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think what would be helpful for the consultants and staff is if, you know, there's, there's maybe only five or six areas that we're talking about here. So if you would, at some point in this meeting, all entertain, you know, before I leave, you know, we just kind of go through those five areas, get a head count of who wants what where, and then we can kind of settle that. I mean, we're, again, we're, this is your plan. We're open to whatever direction you all see fit. We just need clarity from the majority of you, that's all.
Okay, and then real quickly, just an administrative question. Um, I just wanted, we got a few weeks ago, uh, um, and that person contacted some of the council members, uh, about a trans-air drive property and how, um, his use of the property is affected because of, um, a line that he wants us to move. And I wanted to sort of get your, your feedback about, you know, what can be done here to address this concern and what's involved in that.
Sure, and I was, um, I mean, see if I can find the airfa- I assume you're talking about the airport overlay line?
Yes, yes, yes. It was a while back. I can't find it.
Sure, sure, yeah. So, uh, and let me see if I can share my screen here. Give me one second. Okay, can you all see this? Should be a plan, land use plan?
Yeah.
Okay. So you should be looking at a map of the RDU Airport Overlay Zone. Um, and I believe, and, and remember, Row, correct me if I'm wrong, that the, uh, Mr. Subashaw was interested in having this line in particular straightened to include areas of trans-air drive? So right now, I think the way we have it, yeah, here we go. So right now, we have sort of a zigzag pattern, um, starting at Watkins and then near fifty-four, moving across to Airport Boulevard, and then it dips down to Trans Air Drive. Uh, the reasoning behind that exact delineation is we, uh, the consultants and staff wanted to use the minimum amount of land humanly possible to carry out the sub areas, the TOD, the MacCrimmon area, uh, so that we weren't encroaching further and further into, uh, this, uh, what remains of Airport Overlay A. As you know, RDU is, is very much, uh, not thrilled about what we're proposing here and this corridor. Um, and so they are, they have been very sensitive to any further encroachment. And so we tried to delineate the, the minimum amount of area possible to transact those sub areas. And the reason for that is there is a planned third runway, um, being developed just south of the Briar Creek Reservoir. We're actually right on the banks. And so we wanted to give some breathing room to, in, just in case there is any sort of, um, uh, fluctuation in airport noise contours. And so, and then that was one of the three gestures we, we moved, um, to sort of help better address the concerns that RDU had. The other being noise attenuation requirements and the other, uh, third one being restricting all single-family detached and attached. Um, so this particular, I, I believe Mr. Shaw's property is somewhere around where my cursor is pointing, right, right north of Trans Air Drive. So he's just outside of the airport noise contour. And so I, I believe he requested that we just go ahead and straighten this line out. And staff is not, uh, opposed to that. The only thing that I would ask you all to just keep in mind is that the FAA has reviewed this plan as is, as delineated. And they sent a letter very recently supporting, um, this particular delineation and the recommendations in the plan. Or maybe not supporting, but clarifying that they had no impact, negative impact on the airport operations and that they didn't jeopardize any kind of grant funding and that we were, we were good to proceed. Um, if we change this, which we can, it's again, your plan, but if we change this, uh, that may put that in jeopardy. So I just want you all to be fully aware of that. Uh, and also, of course, RDU has been, been very outspoken and public about any further encroachment, uh, would be met with, um, resistance from them. So again, this would be more parcels being converted from Airport Overlay B or A to B, which staff and consultants are very sensitive to, given how much RDU opposes what we've already done to begin with. So just want to, to clear that, uh, clear that up. But again, your, your call, your plan will do whatever you want us to do.
Okay, well, I think I just wanted to ask that and we can think about it, my colleagues and I. I mean, so what I'm hearing from you, Brad, is that, that, you know, you just, the downside is that it could affect the letter signed by the FAA and then that could affect us, you know, down the road. Um, and, and but the staff is fine with, you know, moving the line. The other consideration is if we didn't agree to it, there's always a rezoning that could, right? Depending on the, you know, that you're not prevented from coming back before the council and rezoning or rezoning not allowed. Okay, so that is allowed, okay. Well, I don't know. I just wanted to ask that today, just to get, uh, professional opinion from the staff. Um, I guess we'll talk amongst ourselves and see what we need to do on this one.
Yeah, if you, if you left it in place the way it is depicted in the, you know, let's say we come forward after the plan's adopted with the Airport Overlay Amendment, which staff intends to do, along with the, you know, TOD and, and MacCrimmon Overlay stuff. Um, if Mr. Shaw is not satisfied with that overlay and wants to extend it even further into the Airport Overlay A, he can propose that through a rezoning. You know, he's fully within his right. And, um, it's just that in the, in the plan, this has already sort of been reviewed by FAA the way it is. So you are opening that back up to, um, to that. And they, and they may not support an encroachment. So I just wanted to fully be transparent about that.
Okay.
Anything else, Councilmember Row?
No, no, I guess I just need to think about it. And Brad, if there was, if we did, if councilman wanted, was fine with doing it, and what would be the process? Would there be enough time to do it before the plan? There may not be to make this change. Because I don't want, because it sounds like you're bound by the FAA. I don't want to jeopardize the FAA not revoking or not signing the letter and then.
We're not, so we're not bound. Everything we do is voluntary. So, this noise overlay is completely voluntary. We're, according to the FAA, we're, their guidelines, we're cleared completely to do whatever we want in this corridor according to their land use chart. So, the 65 Dust Bowl line, according to the 2014 RDU contours, is basically out of Morrisville. So, that's not a concern. It's really being a good partner to FAA and getting their blessing and ensuring that RDU isn't even more irritated with these suggestions that we're making is what staff and consultants are trying to accomplish. But again, you are fully within your right to amend it as you see fit. It's 100% voluntary, it is your plan.
Okay.
So, I guess I'd be concerned in changing it at this point. Is it possible to ask staff to start that conversation with FAA and see if they would bless it with an adjusted line?
Yeah, we can reach back out. So, it sounds like Mr. Shaw just wants the line straight versus, you know, kind of zigzag. So, we can pitch that. And we may not get a response soon. They vary in times, in terms of how quickly they respond. But we can try. But we, they did say, you know, they're careful to clarify that the plan as presented. So, it would switch, they'd have to review it again, so.
That would at least save that potential developer some time and some effort to know that it's already in process so that he would know whether or not it'd be viable in the future.
Sure. And if they wanted, yeah, go ahead.
Just a reminder, the airport overlay shown in the plan is, once again, the recommendation. That line doesn't actually change until we come back to you later with the zoning amendment that officially changes the line. So, there's time between land use plan adoption and adoption of a revised airport overlay to circle back with the FAA and have some additional conversations. And there'll be additional public hearings at that time as well.
Thank you, Planning Director Siegel. Appreciate that. Okay, so, in order to wrap this up and to give staff some clear direction, what we did last time, which worked fairly well and got us to the point where we heard from a lot of residents, is the idea of leaving, reverting to the older designations for anything that goes from VLDR to MDR, or from low-density to medium, or from medium to high. So, I'd ask at this time, for any council members who have, who would like to not do that, to go ahead and speak up. So, it sounds like we have people who are interested in reverting, and we heard from the residents that that was something that they were in favor of. So, if you're not in favor of reverting to the existing land use designations, go ahead and let me know in chat.
So, we've, just to clarify, we, VLDR from the old plan has been condensed into LDR, so it includes everything that's zoned VLDR. But yeah.
Okay, kind of like deleting agricultural last time and making it D.
Yeah. And what, yeah, and the agriculture, you know, if you had an existing farm, you're still obviously allowed to continue. You're essentially grandfathered in. But yeah, in terms of future land use zone, it's similar.
Okay. So, we have something that's a little bit side of that comment. So, why don't we go ahead and address this question from Councilmember Skargans Johnson first? If we can add affordable housing to Town Center, would council be, would any council member have an issue with adding similar language to the Town Center verbiage similar to the TOD? And have staff draft that for our look at for our next meeting.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Fender. Seeing no objections to that, if we could ask staff to draft some language?
Hey, I did have a comment. I had a comment in there.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was on that item or the other. So, Mayor Portem Johnson, please, your comment.
So, I have no, I have no problem with that, making sure affordable housing is added into our Town Center. But I would much rather see language that allows affordable housing across parcels in town. I don't have a problem with it somehow being allowed and available across town. I think, you know, there are some opportunities outside of TOD and Town Center. So, I don't want to restrict it to specific areas. And by it, I mean affordable housing. So, I don't know, that's a lot. And there's, you know, we have work to do in the area of affordable housing and doing, getting some more definitions and some progress moving forward. So, my comments may be bigger than what Brad can bring back in two weeks.
Yeah, we, and just to clarify, we recommend workforce housing, which just for the folks listening, is more targeted to area of median income of 60% to 120%. So, I think someone mentioned, like, police officers, firefighters, nurses, office. Right now, we're not, we haven't recommended any federally subsidized low-income housing, which would be less than 60%.
Yeah, so, this is, that's what I meant, Brad. I meant the same language as you have in TOD East.
Perfect, I can add that.
It sounds like Mayor Portem would be interested in some more general language in the vision part of the plan. Sort of encouraging workforce housing or things that are affordable for many.
Is that okay with everyone? I'm happy to add that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and when you bring all that back, if you could, once again, highlight the pages and where the changes are.
For sure.
So, you don't have to go through the entire plan to locate those changes.
Yeah.
Okay, circling back to the land use designations, looking for any objections to staff bringing back a plan that would leave them as they are for those items on the west side of town. And one item over on the right that goes from MDR to HDR. Mayor Portem Johnson?
So, I think, just a few minutes ago, and Brad, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I thought you said you wanted to go over a couple of areas and just kind of get consensus and verify again. So, I would like Brad to be able to do that. He's the one that's got to move forward here with what we decide. So, I want, I would like him to take us through those areas.
Okay, I can certainly do that. Yeah, I was, I think there's only maybe five or six or so. I can just kind of move from chunk to chunk. And if you all want to see those LDR versus MDR, happy to go either way. As opposed to the blanket, it sounds like what's on the table right now is a blanket. Everything that is underdeveloped or vacant that's being shown as MDR west of 54 would then revert back to LDR. But I'm happy to go section by section if not everyone's on board with that.
That would give Mayor Portem more comfort. We should go ahead and do it that way. Why don't we go ahead and take a break while you're getting that ready? So, we're at 8:32 right now. Why don't we go ahead and reconvene at 8:43? And we'll go over that and we'll do essentially consensus straw poll for those different areas for this next iteration. So, thanks very much, see you at 8:43. Those 8:43, I'm going to bring us back into order, please. Mr. West, you're going to help walk us and facilitate a discussion about those areas that went from VLDR to MDR?
Correct, yeah. I'm ready to get started.
Okay, can we make sure everybody's back? I don't think everybody's back.
Okay, if you could please add in chat that you're back? So, you can confirm that, please.
Obviously, I can't type, sorry about that.
Okay, Mr. West, pass it back to you, please.
All right. Okay, so, can everyone see this PDF that I'm looking at of a map?
Yeah.
I can see it. Would it be easier to work from the Flum map?
So, this is the Flum map. Yeah, I'll show you the designation. So, what we have highlighted here and hatched are the parcels that we've been discussing that are underdeveloped or vacant that could be going to a new designation, either low-density or medium. So, here's just a reminder here, the categories are really focusing this conversation on the medium and low here.
I believe it would be more transparent for everybody if you used the Flum map, which people have been looking at and they're familiar with those colors.
The future land use map.
Well, not the one with the land use designation changes, the one that you created for last time? With the light blue and the lavender?
Yeah, let me see if I can find that.
So, Brad, I'm good with this map. Can we use this? Because this is helpful for me.
Not the one that people are familiar with at this time.
This is the one that's in the plan, so.
Right, but the one that's really, people have been paying attention to and feels gives good transparency is that one with those other colors, and it's a lot simpler.
Okay, I'm fine with either one, just need direction from council.
So, this map is going to be the official zoning map, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, then we need to be working.
Future land use map, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you, it's not, thank you, it's not a zoning map, it's a land use map. Thank you. I think this is the one we need to work with.
I think it doesn't have the designations of what's going from what to what.
I think we all know what they are now.
Anyone watching at home, this is not the map they've been looking at for the last two weeks. I think it's important to do that on behalf of the residents.
Let me just show you the other one. I think this is the other one you're referring to, Mr. Mayor?
Exactly. And then, it's very easy to see what colors we're talking about without getting diluted by everything else.
Happy to do either one, so, whatever people want. Maybe we'll start here, we can.
I mean, like, we cannot spin out over stuff like this, you guys. This one's on the screen, could we just use it?
Sure, we can do that.
Okay, yes, please.
So, right now, you're looking at that analysis that was done. I think I did this for the meeting on the 26th that showed which designations were going from their current zoning to the future land use designation. So, we'll start with the parcel of the hour here, the Kits Creek parcel. Actually, there's a couple of areas in Kits Creek that we're looking at. It's the one toward the west, and then, one at the very front entrance toward the east. I believe, right now, the plan as is, is suggesting that this would develop into medium-density residential. But I'm happy to entertain other designations if the council so wishes.
Okay, the property owner has indicated they wanted to stay very low-density, is that correct?
Yeah, we spoke with Ms. Esther Donegan. She is fine with our current, the former low-density. So, we can go to low-density if you'd like. We can do one, a separate color, totally up to you all.
Okay. Can I take the comments in order on the screen? Councilmember Skargans Johnson, followed by Councilmember Fender.
Thank you, Mayor. This parcel has been owned by the same family for decades. And the homeowner has expressed that they want to retain this land for the foreseeable future. So, to upzone it, it's not, it's in the ETJ for Morrisville and not part of the town itself at this time. So, with those considerations, I mean, I am fine to have this as low-density residential or very low-density residential. It's consistent with what the future use would be over the next 20 or 30 years. So, that's how I'm looking at that specific land.
Thank you, Councilmember Fender.
I'm in agreement, that's what I was going to say.
Mayor Portem Johnson?
So, yeah, I was going to agree too. I think the family has no intention of developing for 20-plus years. So, I think to leave it, and I think I said very low-density before, and thank you, Brad, we don't have a very low-density anymore, it's just low-density, and I think that would be appropriate.
Yep.
Okay, so, that's for all three of those light blue in Kits Creek, is that correct? Okay?
I'm in agreement.
Yeah, it might be easier to do the opt-out if we have problems with, if we have, if we would like to speak and make comments about not bringing it back to low-density. I'll look for comments in there. Brad, which one's next?
Okay, so, that'll be, this will be changed to low-density near Kits Creek. The next one is our these clusters of parcels along near Church Street and Barbie Road, near Providence Place. These are also being shown as MDR in the plan, but happy to entertain a change here as well.
Okay, does anyone object to making those, keeping those LDR? Mayor Portem Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
I believe I was first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that was from last time, my apologies. Councilmember Fender first, thank you.
Well, I think, one, the parcel in Providence Place that's at the very top is being developed now and probably is low-density, but they're building houses there currently.
I believe so.
And so, I think to be consistent, it may make sense to keep that other parcel that's beside that low-density. But in addition, I would like to see the parcels along Church Street to stay low-density. One simple fact, because of the Church Street has no plans to be widened anytime soon. And I don't think it can handle too much more townhomes or apartments along there.
Okay, thank you for that information. Mayor Portem Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
So, I'm not interested in making wholesale changes just yet here at all, quite frankly. Some of these parcels are what I think would be ripe for some medium-density senior-type housing that I would entertain. And I don't want to lose that flexibility. So, I, although I hear what Councilmember Fender just said, and that gives me food for thought, but I'm now, I need to think that through, that suggestion through a little bit more.
Thank you, Councilmember Garamella?
No, I agree the same, because those areas, you know, I'm looking at some kind of a bungalow kind of a thing, like we had senior citizen or, like, there's no way, we already have said that. have said that townhomes are like multifamily is coming in that area. That is obviously, I'm sure in the council, no one will even approve that. But some medium density in that area, I'm okay with that.
And councilmember Rabadi, please.
Just because of the specifics of the Church Street situation, I think that it might be advisable to keep this area low density and put medium density somewhere else where there's more and better infrastructure, somewhere like Holly Creek or somewhere like that. I don't think Church Street will support the development of what you're describing. I just think there's better places for it, but, yeah, that's my comment, thank you.
My comment is simply that senior housing and workforce housing, I think we've made it pretty clear in general that we want to see some of that. I think developers, even if it's low density, would feel emboldened to go, at least to ask and take our temperature on those. So I don't feel concerned of making these low-density residential at this time. Okay, so it looks like there was two people who had a problem with that, so that one can go forward as low density for now. And like I said, in two weeks, we're going to be taking a look at this again. This is an iteration.
Can I make one suggestion?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
That one purple parcel that's at the far left, that's real small, that would make sense for that to be medium density. It's right there in the middle of some townhomes that are already back there.
I do see some very small lots back there.
Yeah, there's townhomes through there. I'm familiar with that area.
Okay, so speak up now if you would also like that parcel to be medium density out of that group. Councilmember Garamella?
Yeah, see, this is where I have a problem, right? When we are cherry picking one to the other, you know, then it goes back, it puts the entire plan, years of development, what they have done, onto a toss, right? Like, we are not experts to say, okay, you keep this medium density, you keep this low density kind of a thing. So that's, I can understand, you know, the Kits Creek one, and I feel more comfortable after, you know, Liz talking to the owner, that whichever way, you know, they're not going to sell that land and that's going to stay as is. So, but especially in these areas, we don't even know, we don't even know the property owners, we have not even vetted, so by just, you know, on broad breath changing it, I don't feel very comfortable.
I'm just being realistic, Satish.
No, no, you are, I'm saying, right? So like the single parcels, I don't even know who the homeowners are, I'm not saying the developers, but a medium density on that area is viable because, I want Michelle to say, because those acres are one acre, so Michelle or Brad, if you can give a rundown, what can they really do in one acre, especially you have setbacks so much there? You know, like, can they really build seven, you know, homes as part of the MDR? Practically, it's not possible. So that's, I just want to have a realistic expectation, Brad or Michelle, I would love to hear your opinion, especially for one acre parcels or two, you know, less than two acre parcels.
We get this question a lot from the development community and we're all hesitant to give an actual unit count because there's so many terrain features that come into play and access issues and tree save areas, et cetera. This particular parcel, it looks like it, you know, it's relatively flat. I don't know the reason why no one has developed it. If we turned on contour layers or something, you might see like a dip or something headed towards the road. So I believe if it was low density, all we can tell you is that the current zoning was applied for low density, you're looking at four and a half units an acre, and they could try to fit whatever they could there, depending on the terrain. And then medium density with our current zoning, we'd be looking at seven and a half units an acre. So you could see a townhome project potentially similar to the neighboring townhome project be located there if the terrain allowed that.
Yeah, no, I was looking more on the Church Street, like the setbacks that people-
Oh, Church Street, okay, so we're talking about this one. And you can all see the aerials that I'm looking at, right?
Yeah, 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 exactly.
So these were done in February 3rd, 2021, by the way, so they're super, super recent. Yeah, so you could fit a fair amount of homes, and these are fairly flat lots. These are some of the old shallow community houses that are on fairly decent lots, they just have longtime residents living there. So I don't, you know, I don't know if they have any indication of selling or if their heirs inherit them one day, if they'd want to redevelop, but it is certainly a great location for new housing. And I believe medium density is sort of what's around next to them currently. And I can switch back to that map here.
Anything else, councilmember Garamella?
Yeah, I meant to say, like, you know, obviously, and also, like, we know that Church Street is not going to get expanded, and is there capacity still on Church Street? Because that's a question I think we asked previously, you know, Benjamin, and he said there was, because I want that, again, reemphasized today.
Yeah, I don't believe Church Street is, as far as I know, and Michelle can chime in if not, but I don't believe Church Street is going to be expanded. I think there's plans to expand nearby NC 54, I think north of McCrimmon though.
Yeah, but the other question is, is there, is there sufficient capacity on Church Street or not? Because I think the studies were done there, and from what I heard from Benjamin is there is, so I want to reiterate, or you can take that question back and come back to us.
Yeah, because usually what we do is, if there's a significant development happening, we'll require a traffic impact analysis to tell us just that, you know, what it would do to existing road infrastructure. So we can't, I don't know if Ben's online, but we couldn't probably answer that tonight, so.
Yeah, no, absolutely, it's a takeaway question that would be useful for me. Thank you.
So it looks like we have three people who want LDR, two that are more leaning MDR. Unless anyone wants to say anything else, I can-
I want to recognize Mayor Pretten Johnson, who had another comment, please, and then we can wrap on these.
So to make this really clear and to move this process along, what would be really helpful is to say, are you okay with what we have here in front of us? Yes or no? And then move on to the next section. So I'm okay tonight with leaving what's in front of us here. Councilmember Fender brought up something that I'm going to mull. We have the opportunity to change our mind in the next two weeks, but I think it would be helpful to say, are you okay with this? Yes or no? And then I think you need to hear from everybody, quite frankly.
I agree, yeah, that sounds good.
That's essentially what we're doing by opting out, we're just trying to get through this process in a more reasonable way. So, yeah, and-
It's not how you approach, that's not how you pose the question, that's why I'm clarifying.
Right, I'm trying to facilitate the questions and keep the meeting moving. So this all looks good as LDR except for that one spot to the far left, to which, unless someone puts in chat that they want that one, well, if people, if more people want that to be MDR, per councilmember Fender's suggestion, go ahead and speak up now.
Can I, I'm just going to jump in there. You're making this confusing. What I'm asking is, what we have in front of us shows medium density residential. I'd like the question to be posed, are you okay with this being medium resident, medium density residential or not? And let us all weigh in. And if the answer is, because I, you're, I think you're confusing some folks out here.
I don't think I am, I think it's pretty-
Me, by the way. I didn't hear, I did not hear majority say they want to see low density or, yeah, low density residential here, and you keep asking the question that way, or you keep posing it that way. That's why I'm saying, can we please address what we're seeing in front of us and answer that question?
Okay, I found that that wasn't moving us along for the whole process. So councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. This process is difficult virtually, you know, it just really is, and my concern about this particular stretch of Church Street with medium density residential is probably something you haven't heard about before. Church Street is not designated to ever be expanded from two to four lanes. And Morrisville Carpenter, which I live on, is now two lanes and is going to be expanded to four lanes. The effect of the transition from two to four lanes means some existing neighborhoods that have driveway cuts into the system are no longer going to have full access movement, and so they will have to have their entrances right in, right out. So for me, looking at this Church Street section, I am thinking that all of this medium density residential, are we, are we considering, you know, that we're going to be building neighborhoods that might be future impacted with an expanded roadway that hurts their mobility? I know that sounds strange, but if we kept it low density, we might have better mobility along that roadway for a longer amount of time, so.
Yeah, based on what I've been hearing out there, I want to mull it over a little bit, I got to think it's over, but I'm fine with having it just stay low density because of just the infrastructure issues on Church Street.
Okay, so the low density habit, it sounds like.
Yeah, but the, yeah, and I'll mull over that back parcel that Donna mentioned too. It's just Church Street I'm a little sensitive to because of the road there.
Okay, if I could recognize planning director Stiegel, please, she has her hand up.
I just wanted to provide a point of information. Councilmember Fender had referenced development on one of those larger pieces just south of 540. So that large property that fronts on Weaver Forest Way, that is, there isn't approved development there now, it was actually approved of five lots. It looks like they're going to be modifying that and going down to four lots. I know we've had discussions in the past of you can't just look at a piece of parcel and, you know, multiply the acreage by the density because there are a lot of other factors. That piece of property has a lot of environmental, which is why you see so few homes going on it, and there will be a considerable tree save area designated on that property as well.
That's wonderful, that's right on the greenway too. So thank you for giving us that information. Okay, Brad, which area is next?
All right, so now we're looking at the large parcel by Breckenridge and across from the Carey Development, I think it's called Brickyard, and then of course the new Louis Stevens connection being either finished or almost finished. And so right now, we're asking if you're okay with this being shown as MDR, or if you'd rather go classify it as LDR.
Okay, so I would like LDR. Let's see in chat what people would like, please. I'll recognize councilmember Rabadi.
Oh, sorry, I thought you said to put in chat. I would rather see that stay LDR.
Okay, councilmember Garamella? I believe you're muted, councilmember Garamella?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So, T.J., going back to, you know, your statement you did regarding the Kits Creek property, right? You said the property owner wanted LDR, and so that's the reason you're honoring that?
Not the only reason, sir.
But that was one of the things, like, you know, you had emphasized it. So my thing is, I don't know who the property owner here is, but I certainly know, like, the public comments, this guy, whoever it came, he said he wanted multifamily there. And obviously, we are not going with that. So I am okay with MDR because that kind of blends with the whole infrastructure around there, and this particular area is also getting a Louis Stevens extension, so the infrastructure blends very good, it's a brand-new road that goes in, the mobility is there, so I am perfectly okay with MDR there.
Thank you for sharing. Would other people like to weigh in, or should we just have it go? Okay, councilmember, I mean, Mayor Pretten Johnson?
So I'm in agreement with Satish. I think it, the surrounding properties are all actually a higher density than medium density. So I think the medium density designation sits well.
Councilmember Rabadi has a question?
Is there any conceivable scenario where medium density development could go on that parcel before Louis Stevenson is completed? No, right?
Probably there would wait, yeah, you're right, it'd probably wait till it's completed. And I think if we look at the aerial, you can see the progress, so this is only, this was taken just a few days ago, and it's almost done. You can see, I think the intersection's left here, but you can see the roadway right there, so, yeah, they probably waited, in my opinion.
Okay, so not hearing more people to keep it at MDR?
Here, Mayor, this is Steve Row. Brad, if we kept it as MDR, is that still, would it only be preferred single-family detached?
So you have, you have language on several different pages of this plan that indicate that you all have a preference for single-family detached in this area, so I think you'd be covered if that's what you're asking.
I'm tempted to keep it low density, but councilmember Garamella made some really great points about the extension and the fact that it's suitable to other areas. I think that, I know that citizens concerned about its impact on schools and things like that, but I think that we could control that through conditions, and I'm willing to, even though I'm, you know, fine with keeping it MDR, I think that a lot of these comments have been made is that, you know, we need to be very selective about how much infrastructure we approve and, you know, how quickly we approve it. So, I mean-
So when you say, keep it MDR, it's moving from LDR to LDR, is what?
Oh, okay, but it was, under the current land use plan, though?
It's LDR now.
Okay.
It's being proposed to move to MDR.
So the other future land use map has us designated as medium density-
That's what I meant, that's what I meant, the future land use map, that's what I meant.
So that's three for MDR and two for LDR, so we probably need to hear from every single person here.
Yeah, it seems like a death by a thousand cuts if we're gonna-
The nature of planning.
Yep.
Mayor, can I speak up then too?
Councilmember Johnson, please.
Scroggins-Johnson?
Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Yeah, okay. This particular area, I think it's more compatible with medium density residential than it would be with low density residential, so I would be in support of the proposed land use as drafted in the plan.
Okay, that brings us to four for the MDR.
Councilmember Rabadi?
Oh, yeah, I already said this, I don't know if we missed it, I'm for LDR, but I don't think it matters.
Oh, it all matters.
Well, right, but-
So at this time, council is giving direction for staff to have that move from current designation of LDR to MDR in the future land use plan now.
T.J., you totally skipped me again, but it doesn't matter.
I apologize, I saw you, councilmember Fender indicated she's in favor of LDR, as is Mayor Colley on this parcel.
So that's three for LDR, four for MDR, so I guess that means MDR is.
For this iteration, yes.
Okay, next we have the Small Pocket Land on Family Farm Road, some longtime residents of Morrisville. of Morrisville.
Are we talking about the light blue now or are we...
Yeah, the light blue.
What about that lavender to the left?
Oh, so that was part of that Breckenridge. Yeah, we can, we can single this one out.
Very different in that that's not on Louis Stevens.
Sure. Happy to talk about that one specifically.
People want to, I would like that to stay LDR. Other thoughts?
I think it makes sense to have it MDR.
Okay. Councilmember Fender?
You're talking about the lavender piece in the middle of the screen right now. Didn't we already do that one?
I think the mayor suggested we talk about this separately, so...
It has different circumstances. It's not on Louis Stevens. Is the infrastructure around there supportive of MDR rather than LDR, et cetera? So would that be a pond that can get drained like before?
I believe it's a farm pond. Yeah, so probably. But I can't confirm one way or the other without an engineer going out there and taking a look at it.
Okay. So the current land use plan is LDR. The future land use plan indicates this as going up to MDR. If people would like to weigh in? I'm trying to figure out what, where these started, these comments.
So we got one for LDR, one for MDR.
Okay.
No, I think you have three for MDR.
For this particular?
And that LDR was for the last one.
Okay, so we'll start with the 914, Donna Fender. Recognize Councilmember Fender?
Uh, MDR.
Uh, Mayor Protem Johnson?
MDR.
Councilmember Robati?
MDR.
Hey, Brad, can you zoom? I'm trying to figure out which property it is. Like, I'm kind of lost.
The one right dead center in the screen, this triangle purple, and I'll go back to the map here.
Yeah, where does it really fit?
Here's the aerial. You can see the townhome project behind it and other, I think it's Carey, actually, across the street.
And so what is the one on the south side of the property? Like...
That is the Carey subdivision.
Oh, the Macramin at the park? Oh, okay. Oh, this particular.
I'll zoom out. Here you go.
Okay, got it. Yeah, yeah. So it's on Louis Stevens, though, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
MDR is fine.
All right. Looks like MDR has it for that triangle piece.
Thank you.
Moving on. All right. So we got Family Farm Road, again, small cluster of parcels from long-term Morrisville residents. We understand that some of these are up for sale and there are rearguing questions about them. So right now, we are showing this as also MDR. And we're happy to entertain something else.
These are currently very-low-density residential?
Currently very, uh, currently very-low-density residential.
Okay. Recognize Plan Director Stiegel real quick for a comment? Plan Director Stiegel, did you have your hand up?
Sorry, Mayor, forgot to unmute myself. But just another point of information on this one. This is an older area of town. A lot of these properties are on well-inseptic. So when in the future this gets developed, whenever that is, we are anticipating that there will be costs associated with utility extensions into the neighborhood.
Those costs would be borne by the town?
They would be borne by the developer.
Okay. Good information. Thank you very much. Councilmember Robati?
I don't see any reason to make these anything than, other than low-density residential.
Thank you. Councilmember Rao? Councilmember Rao, would you like to give your input on the Family Farm parcels? Okay, I'll circle back. Anyone else like to weigh in on this? Councilmember Fender?
Brad, can you go back to the map and zoom in? Trying to figure out where exactly are these lots? Are they in the middle? Like, are they near Town Hall?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so they're completely surrounded by existing development just about. And here's Town Hall Drive right here.
Okay.
And here's McCrimmon right here.
Hidden. All right.
Yeah, they're tucked away.
I would go with MDR there. I think that makes sense.
So we got one for LDR, one for MDR.
The mayor is also LDR.
Your LDR as well. So now two for LDR?
MDR.
Councilmember Rao?
Okay, we're tied.
We're gonna go through it and have everyone weigh in every time. We need people to, please, go into chat and be acknowledged.
I want to think about it because I, my heart says MDR, but I just want to think because it's kind of hard to make a judgment here.
Well, I would propose that we had a plan and we presented it to the residents and we have heard loud and clear that they would like to see something different. So I would love to give them the opportunity to see something different, which would be moving these to LDR and then seeing if there's similar reaction of people being unhappy with that. We need to try to find a way to meet the needs of our entire community now and in the future. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
So some of these parcels, I'm not comfortable labeling MDR, LDR quite yet because I just need a little bit more information. But, you know, some of the other ones are easier for me to kind of speak up against, up for, or whatever. When I see long-time residents, I'm leaning towards keeping that low-density residential because, you know, they've been there for a while and we don't necessarily know their intentions, but they might want to stay. And, you know, that could be for the foreseeable future, even though everything around them is growing. So I'm a little conservative there.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
So I, I'm gonna, I'm struggling a little bit here. So Brad, when you notified the property owners and they, and they got to see a map, which map did they, did they look at? Did they look at this map?
They looked at the one in the plan, which is the initial one I showed at the very beginning of the meeting. So that was the one they're linked to.
So when, when...
Not this one, but another one.
When all the property owners that are, that were, were kind of, in some cases, changing, when they were given a map, and so let's talk about this specific area for a minute. They were given a map that showed them going to medium-density residential. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, we, the consultants and staff recommended medium-density residential for this, for this area. And I have the other map, too. I can pull up if we need to.
So here, that's fine, that's fine. So here's where I'm starting to get a little bit of heartburn. So they saw that map and they looked at it, maybe, maybe not, but maybe, and they said, "You know what? I'm good with this. This is what the town is planning on doing and I like this plan." And now we're changing that on them. So again, maybe, or maybe, or maybe not, they were okay with what was shown to them. So I'm having a little heartburn. As much as I'd like to see a low-density residential, that's not what they were shown. And so that kind of leans me to say, maybe we leave it as medium-density residential because they potentially could be okay with that. Unless we heard specifically from them. And I've not heard from these, these landowners, these property owners.
So I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, I think we have Member Robati, you, Member Scroggins-Johnson for LDR. And then for MDR, we have Member Fender, Member Rao, and Mayor Protem for MDR. So I think, Member Garamella, you might be the tiebreaker here.
Man, that's exactly the reason. I didn't want to get it, not for the tiebreaker point of view. And I agree, like, I don't know anything about this property. So that's the reason, just sitting here and making a sweeping comment there, it's hard for me. And I, because these are, as we keep saying, these are long-term residents. And so I think it would not be fair to just, you know, put it, I would like to go drive there and see that place because I have never gone into that area.
So since we're split, I assume we just leave it as proposed and as the last iteration?
Yeah, and then come back to it, yeah.
I'm afraid that then people don't get the option to weigh in. If we say LDR and they're unhappy with it, they can let us know.
So for TJ, you know, it's very simple for you because you are pretty much saying LDR all across, right? So we have basically, I've seen, you know, Donna and, and, you know, which they started with LDR, they're talking MDR. But personally, I don't know anything about this property. So for, from your stand, it's very simple. All LDRs. We get it. But for others, you know, who want to flip the other way, for me, like saying LDR, I don't know anything about it. Okay? So I need some time on that.
Right. So it's just been a broad brush to MDR already. So it's good to give people something to react to. Last time, two weeks ago, residents were given the opportunity to react, to actually understand what the changes were.
So that's where I get confused. Are we are looking for a reaction here or are we paying with the lives and of properties who are there, have invested, you know, decades and decades of property here? So it's not like a reaction here. I think we need to be more sensitive of what we are trying to do here.
I'm very sensitive. That's why I think it's important that we make sure our infrastructure keeps up so that everyone can enjoy the benefits of town.
Yes.
So I understand what you're saying, Satish, Councilmember Garamella. So I'm just trying to give people more to react to, and then we can hear from them about what their thoughts are.
Sounds like we're still split, which to me, it means, you know, we're leaving it as is for now, which I was hoping to avoid today, but if we need to leave one that, this is a fairly small area, we can always amend that. So for now, we'll leave it MDR as proposed.
I'd like to go, I'd like to go and visit the property as well, but I, I just went with MDR because of having a balance of affordable housing. I don't feel comfortable. I haven't met the property owners. Haven't heard from them. But, so for now, I'm fine with keeping it as is and staff's recommended, but I may have to go take a look myself. And I feel a little uncomfortable looking at it, you know. Right now, I feel like Councilmember Garamella, some of these properties I don't, I haven't been out there, you know, and I'm just going on based on what I've, what I'm hearing, seeing.
Well, so we're okay with going to MDR without visiting? So that's, that's two sides of that same coin.
No, but I mean, I'm not, I'm not, like Councilmember Garamella said, your decision's been made up for years about what you want to do. I'm actually basing my decision on facts and input and data from people that I'm hearing from all across the town. So, you know, I, I take offense at that remark that, you know, I, I'm taking these decisions very seriously, like Councilmember Garamella said. Not doing it to get a reaction, but to actually, you know, listening to our staff and citizens across the town, so.
When I say to get a reaction, I mean to get input.
All right, well, I mean...
That's what I mean. I didn't mean to offend in any way, sir.
No, you're not offending. I'm just, I'm just being upfront.
Fair enough.
So, yeah, so I think we'll just, we'll, you know, I'm fine with keeping it as is now, but, you know, I think we can, you know, I'd like to go back and take a look there myself.
Okay. Great.
All right. This is a fairly significant one we're moving on to. This is where they're going to, and I don't know the exact timing of this, but there's going to be a major infrastructure improvement here, the Airport Boulevard extension. I believe we recently confirmed funding for that. And then I wish Ben Howell, I don't know if he's online, he could tell you more about the specifics of that project, I believe is a LAP funded project. And there would, I believe, be a great separation for where the railroad goes. And if you give me one second, I can scoot over to that area. Yeah, I don't know if you can tell from my screen, but there's already some right-of-way dedicated for that extension. There's some existing residential, again, older, long-term residents of Morrisville, but mostly vacant. There is a use that's legally non-conforming use on a currently designated low-density, or I'm sorry, zoned low-density site. And so that's just something to keep in mind. And we've had calls about all of these houses. I'm not sure which ones are being listed. I know some of them are being listed. But there are just some, some things to keep in mind as well. And of course, there's this nearby school here. This is Cedar Fork Elementary School. So I'll go back to the...
Can I make a comment?
Sure. Yes, please.
Can we table the rest of this discussion? It seems like it's more of something to talk about during a workshop or a retreat. I mean, we still have two items, new items on the agenda, and then a closed session to go through tonight.
That's why I was hoping to just do a blanket, move it to LDR in recognition of what our residents have shared with us. I think it's important, we're getting towards the end of this. I think it's important to go ahead and finish so that people have something that they can give input to for our next meeting.
Yeah, I think we only have a couple of larger areas. Holly Creek and this area near McCrimmon Parkway. And of course, we could lump this parcel in with this decision as well, if you'd like, to speed things up.
All right. Given Church Street, my comments that I made earlier, I think it makes sense for this, these parcels to be low-density.
Okay. American Curbs. Councilmember Robati?
I have no interest in moving any more people closer to Cedar Fork. I'm for remaining low-density here.
Looking in chat for other people who would like to weigh in?
Brad, you know, talking about infrastructure, you know, we are talking about two major infrastructure here coming right on Macramin, like a flyover and also the airport flyover that goes through it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so there would be a major infrastructure improvement here as well.
So with that said, like, you know, we can always, you know, tie it, the language, you know. And do we know especially the flyover for Macramin? I think it's, what, 2025, 2027? I don't, like, it keeps changing, so I kind of lost timeline on that.
Yeah, I think, I think the flyover for, and then Michelle can correct me if I'm wrong, the flyover for McCrimmon is on tap sooner than the one for Airport Boulevard, I believe. So the one happening up here near TOD, that would happen sooner, I believe. And then Airport Boulevard would be a later project, from my understanding. Because we, I don't even think there's right-of-way or design work that's been done for the Airport Boulevard one.
Yeah, and I believe Ben's on, so he might know if that's been pushed back. But it was originally slated for 2021 to 2023. I don't think that that's happening. So I don't know if he might be able to share a little bit more about that timeline. And the Airport Boulevard flyover is coming a little later as well. The LAP grant that we got only extends to Church.
Yes, thank you, Michelle. The...
The McCrimmon flyover was pushed back a little bit, but it should still be going under construction by, I think around 2023, and should be completed by about 2025.
Okay. And thanks, Benjamin, for coming, so I wanted to circle back, there was one question I had asked was, if you can take it back, you don't have to answer now, is the capacity on Church Street, you know, because I, we have asked several times, and there's absolutely, you guys replied saying there will not be a four-lane road on Church Street, but is the present capacity ready to take more traffic, or is it at capacity?
There, Councilman Garamella, there, there is existing capacity available on Church Street. Our CTP actually looked at that, and that was why it was not recommended for widening, that was one of the reasons, is that Church Street is still under capacity even with the additional development. However, I will say that Campo and their long-range transportation plan, their MTP, they have identified Church Street for a future widening to three lanes, so essentially having a center turn lane almost the entire length of Church Street. But that is not a funded project at this time.
Okay, that, that's good information, you know, to at least have an additional turn lane in there. Okay.
I have one.
Go ahead.
I have one, I have one question.
Well, I was hoping that Councilmember Garamella could give the idea about zoning, and then we'll go to Mayor Johnson, and then Councilmember Rao.
So, 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 so from what you said, it's 2023 to 2025, what about the airport, you know, what is the timeline for that, at least near ballpark?
For the grade separation, there is no current timeline for Airport Boulevard grade separation. It's a future project, but we do not know when it may be funded.
Okay.
And Church Street will never be able to take a left onto Marshall Carpenter, that's stopping, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Garamella, thoughts about LDR or MDR for this area near the overlay?
I would, I would stay with the LDR for now, because only for the reason is not knowing the Mac, you know, the Airport Boulevard extension, but that's my first pass, you know, I can, this is not set in stone, so I, I'll come back to it later, but right now I'll LDR.
Yeah, we'll be looking at all this again in two weeks. Mayor Protam-Johnson. Mayor Protam-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Rao.
So I, I'm okay with this MDR, it, MDR here is, again, not as dense as the surrounding area, and it's a nice step back from TOD West, and I, I do think this is one of the areas in town I do think would, would be a good location for a senior facility, a senior bungalow facility, I, I think it would work really well here. And I know there are some interest, there's interest from developers for a product like that.
Thank you, Councilmember Rao.
Um, yeah, I think I could go either way on this one, but I, I think, I feel just that a first pass, keeping it LDR because of the unknown of the infrastructure, you know, on the road, and just with, you know, so I'd want to see more of those timelines of infrastructure investments, so I think just keeping it LDR for now is fine for me.
So we got five for LDR so far.
Okay, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, did you want to weigh in on this one?
So this, this has me mixed, because I know that when you build more homes near a school, maybe a lot of residents are going to be losing out on access to that school. With the flyover, though, we could prefer for this area to be like senior housing and stuff to ease the, to ease the school situation. So I don't know if it's, it's not being rezoned, but how, how do we influence that, besides just having broad language about affordable, or, you know, senior kind of stuff? I mean, Brad, is there some way to kind of show the council's preference for that area to be medium with consideration for 55-plus housing or something?
So in the, the land use plan, each future land use designation has a list of preferred uses, and so we could, if you wanted to, or council was, was of desire, we could add senior living, or something of the sort, to those residential designations. So like, you'll see with medium, we have preferred uses, and these are usually the predominant uses, single-family detached and single-family attached for medium density. If you all would like, we could add in the medium density senior living facility as well, if that's something you all would entertain.
I like it, but I, I'm not sure if everybody likes it, but I think that would be helpful clarifying language that would give us a little bit more steer in that direction. Thank you.
Yeah, I would support that as well, too. In the text of the plan, perhaps, something that you can drop a sentence or two that might help. Also, I wanted to make a comment that to give the direction that we're looking for age-well communities, we asked for that at Wood Partners, they said no, but here it is a year and a half later, and firepoint is coming into play. So I think if we keep on talking about it, developers are hearing us, which is nice. Council, Mayor Protam-Johnson?
No, I just agree, I just agree with the comments that you just made about the language.
Okay, the reason I'm acknowledging is so people who are watching also have the insight of what you're sharing. Okay, thank you, Mr. West, you got what you needed for those parcels?
All right, and this Holly Creek zone right here is, this is the neighborhood that it was shown as MDR in the future land use map, I believe it's currently zoned, very low-density residential. So we're asking if you would prefer to keep this as proposed, as medium-density residential, or switch it back to, or downward towards low-density residential?
I'll chime in, the mayor feels that low-density residential is appropriate there, as it has been for many years. Mayor Protam-Johnson?
I was just going to say, when we, when we talk about the property owners and what they've reacted to so far, and quite frankly, what they've asked for, the majority, not all, but the majority of the neighbors here have actually asked for a higher use and a higher intensity, so I think a nice, a nice compromise would be medium-density, considering that's exactly what the neighborhood butts up against in the Towne of Cary, actually, it's even denser, quite frankly, in the Towne of Cary, so MDR would be fine.
Okay, Councilmember Fender?
I could go with MDR.
Okay, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
I could go with MDR as well, since it's compatible with surrounding units in that area.
Councilmember Rabadi?
MDR is fine here for me, just with the proviso that I don't want to see townhomes in this area. Just let, just getting that out there upfront.
Thank you. Councilmember Rao?
Um, MDR, as long as, you know, I agree with Councilmember Rabadi, limiting townhomes or, and, you know, reminding everyone that the preference is single-family detached, and, you know, we're going to be looking at that carefully.
Thank you, Councilmember Garamella?
No, MDR is good, I think even this would be a good set of high and single families I'm looking for, so, but it's, again, we don't know who will develop it and how it goes, so I'm, I'm not saying anything, but MDR is perfect, and Davis will get more capacity too, we know that, so infrastructure will certainly support that area.
Thank you.
All right, so I, I think that for the big parcels here, I believe, west of 54, I think that there's a small one in the Activity Center area. I don't recall you all, any of you all having an issue with that one, or with the form of Wood Partners, I think it's called Alton now, so I'll, I'll pass unless someone has objection to that, and I can go back to the key in case you guys are, so that's LDR to an NAC right here.
Yeah, I didn't hear a lot of people having problems with going to the NACs and things like that, as suggested, as the things going up to MDR and HDR. And there is one more on the right that goes from MDR to HDR.
Yeah, and we can, yeah, we could do that one separately from the rest of the Church Street ones, yeah, this, this is next to an existing townhome project, next to an apartment complex. I think it's Wexford is what they call it, and so this is going to HDR, because it's sort of, I think the thinking was it's sandwiched between these two uses, so, but it's, again, totally, we could do MDR, we can do LDR, whatever we want, and that'll be the last one I think we really need.
Okay, so what would you call that one for a description?
Uh, parcel near Hampton, is it Hampton Place Towns? I think that's what it's, the subdivision here, like, let me go to the map to show you.
Okay, so I got the description in the chat, would people like to chime in on that one?
Yeah, there's an existing, I think there's an existing space, flex space or something there now, but zoning, I believe is LDR, so it's a legally non-conforming use, and there's a road stub from the adjacent townhome project into this parcel, so something to keep in mind.
So it's an existing building, and we'll have to decide what it will be when it eventually is redeveloped.
Correct, exactly.
Okay, looking in chat, just on the overall theory that we want our infrastructure to catch up, and hopefully this won't be redeveloped anytime soon, I'd like to say LDR for now, they can bring something forward that we can consider in the future, but anyone else want to chime in on this one?
I'd like to see it at MDR.
Rather than the draft land use plan, which is HDR, is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. Mayor Protam-Johnson?
I, again, I'm having a little heartburn about changing things on a map when the property owners haven't seen it, but I would agree with MDR on this one as well.
Okay.
Yeah, MDR for me too is perfectly fine there.
Thank you, Councilmember Garamella.
MDR.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, and then Councilmember Rao.
I'm okay with this going to MDR, and I don't want Liz Johnson to have any more heartburn.
Thank you, Councilmember Rao.
Yeah, quite frankly, I don't want to have Liz Johnson have heartburn either, but I'm, I'm fine with MDR.
Okay.
My health is fine, by the way, but thank you all. I'm fine with MDR.
I also said quite frankly.
Okay, well, I think that's, I think that's all we really need, I know that was arduous, but I really appreciate you all taking the time to finally clarify that, we will make those changes and present a significantly different future land use map for you all to consider adoption, so I'm happy to bring that back, I think we can get that, I'm almost positive we can get that back for the next meeting, so look forward to seeing that.
Okay, and in what form will that be, the one that's in the plan itself, or like the one that you created two weeks ago?
Plan itself.
Is it possible also create it for the one with just the color changes?
I, I think, yeah, I tend to disagree, because I think the more we deviate out from the master plan, it kind of takes it a different direction, because we went with an exercise here, it would be good to pull back into the main land use plan that's transparent to everyone in the future.
I think parallel.
This is the one that we changed.
Yeah.
I think during the vault in parallel, heard only good things about the map that Mr. West created, about transparency, and the residents really like to have an easy way to see what proposed changes are.
Yeah, and, and that can be spelled out too, right?
Yeah, I can see, we should have a capacity, and when I say we, I mean me, to make a second map, so I can, I can, we'll obviously have to update the plan map, and then I can see if I can just update the other one too, so we'll have the best of both worlds, does that sound good?
That sounds very good. And if there's some way to reach out to the family farm people again, that's where we were split, to try to get a little bit more insight from them, or encourage them to share their thoughts, even though the public hearing is closed, we're still open to emails from everyone on all of these subjects.
All right, excellent, this is great, so we will, we will work on this and bring back something for you to consider for, for hopefully adoption, so thanks again.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, I'm looking for, okay, we are now moving on, thank you, Mr. West, very much for your time and efforts on that. We are now at item nine, new items, there are two new items on tonight's agenda, a proposed amendment of the land use plan and zoning map for Zero Slater Road, and a proposed amendment of the zoning map for 3109 and 703 Slater Road. Elliot Ward, Planner Two, will present the first item. Mr. Ward?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, yes, and I'd like to request control. Are we sharing the agenda still?
Hold on, let me switch back, Brad was cheering. There you go. Request control.
And I think there's a delay on the.
Click on the slide somewhere so that it knows it's you.
Okay. Pretty far down from where we were, right? Am I correct? Sorry, Gina, can you still control it?
Yeah, hold on, I think you're back.
Page 224 of the Agenda Act.
And you want your presentation?
Correct.
Okay, I'll get it for you, hold on.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
Click on the slide.
All right, yeah, as I mentioned, presenting item 2021-23-0, it's a request to amend the land use plan and zoning map for Zero Slater Road. The subject parcel outlined in red is located southeast of the intersection of Slater Road and Carrington Mill Boulevard, and it's bisected by Slater Road. The site is approximately 25.28 acres, and specifically identified by Wake County PIN Dominion is requesting that the land use plan be amended from the Regional Activity Center designation to the Business Activity Center designation on the north side of Slater Road, and the High Density Residential designation on the south side. The petitioner is also requesting that the zoning map be amended from the Regional Activity Center District to the Conditional Business Activity Center District on the north side, and the Conditional High Density Residential District on the south side. The site is adjacent to the Regional Activity Center zoning district to the south and east, the Office Institutional District to the north, and the High Density Residential District to the west here. The request is to accommodate an expected office building use on the north side of Slater Road and a multifamily development on the south side. The site is not. Uh, the site is not located within the town's corporate limits and would also need to be annexed. Uh, the two thousand nine land use plan designates the parcel as medium density residential, whereas the, uh, draft land use plan, uh, designates Business Activity Center on the north side of Slater Road and High Density Residential on the south side. The applicant provided a T I A, which was conducted in May of two thousand twenty. Uh, the T I A indicated the proposed development is expected to generate, uh, two thousand six hundred ninety-eight new daily trips, uh, with two hundred ninety-seven trips in the AM peak hour and three hundred and sixteen trips in the PM peak hour. The T I A recommended that the developer construct a three-lane cross-section on Slater Road between the access points of the proposed development with, uh, all ex, all access points expected to operate, uh, acceptably as full access driveways. The, the T I A also analyzed, uh, the Slater Road and Sorrel Grove Church Road intersection, uh, circled here, uh, due to its proximity to the proposed development. And while it stated that the intersection is not expected to meet all of the N C D O T warrants for a traffic signal, um, it showed that the proposed development would contribute thirteen percent of the traffic at the intersection in the AM peak and fourteen percent of the traffic in the PM peak, degrading the level of service at the intersection and the, it recommended that the intersection continue to be monitored, uh, as it will likely meet the warrants for signalization as more development occurs, uh, in the surrounding area. Uh, so based on this recommendation, the applicant has offered a contribution, a condition to contribute fifteen thousand dollars, uh, for a future traffic signal at that intersection of Slater Road and Sorrel Grove Church Road. Switch, okay. Uh, per the town's current payment in lieu of fee of twenty-two hundred and forty dollars per, uh, the new multifamily, per unit for the new multifamily development, the estimated Parkland P I L contribution would be, uh, five hundred and sixteen thousand one hundred and twenty dollars for the anticipated two hundred and thirty units. Um, based on Wake County density estimates, the estimated school impact for the multifamily development would be, uh, approximately fifty students for the two hundred and thirty anticipated units. Um, the applicant has offered to prohibit uses shown here on slide eight, um, which would typically be permitted in the high density residential and business activity cen, center districts. Uh, the applicant has also offered numerous other conditions, including limiting the size of the office building and number of units, uh, for the multifamily development, uh, cross-access agreements to the various adjacent parcels, traffic signal contribution as mentioned, and the other road improvements as well. Um, in the purpose of time, uh, I won't read all of the conditions out loud, but they can be found in this presentation as well as in the attached ordinance. As you can see, there's several conditions, several slides here, so... Um, at the January twenty-fourteenth Planning and Zoning Board Meeting, the P C B unanimously recommended approval of the requests. And staff recommends approval of the requested land use plan and zoning map amendment, uh, from Regional Activity Center to Conditional Act, Business Activity Center District on the north side of Slater Road and Conditional High Density Residential on the south side, uh, for the following reasons. The requested land use plan amendment is consistent with the recommendations in the final draft of the land use plan currently under consideration. Uh, the requested zoning map amendment would allow for development that is compatible with the adjacent Office Park to the north and the adjacent multifamily development to the west. The conditions offered from the applicant would prohibit uses inconsistent with the surrounding area as well as ensure development, uh, in compliance with the U D O. And the request is compatible with recommendations in sections five point three point four A two and five point three point ten C three of the two thousand nine land use plan. Uh, council should hold a public hearing on the proposed land use plan and zoning map amendments and after which should, uh, approve the request, approve the request with conditions or deny the request. And that's all I have. Uh, the applicant would like to make a brief presentation and then will be available for, um, any questions you may have.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Ward, and good evening, Mayor Calley, uh, or good night, I should say, Mayor Calley, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson, and members of the town council. Uh, my name is Neil Gosh. I am an attorney at the Morningstar Law Group located at one twelve West Main Street in Durham. Tonight, I am representing Dominion Realty Partners, who you might be familiar with. They are the developers of Shiloh Crossings here in Morrisville, but as this project demonstrates, they do more than just multifamily. In fact, in addition to multifamily projects, their portfolio includes several office and mixed-use projects in the Triangle, other parts of North Carolina, South Carolina, and the G's. With this project, they're bringing their experience to deliver a mixed-use development, which will provide both Class A office space and residential opportunities. In total, the rezoning would allow up to one hundred thirty-seven thousand five hundred square feet of office and up to two hundred and thirty residential units. But Dominion is no stranger to Morrisville and therefore has undertaken to do a lot more. This project required T I A and Dominion has committed to every single recommendation of that T I A. But what's more, Dominion also has committed to contributing towards the traffic signal at Slater and Sorrel Grove Church Road, which was not a recommendation of the T I A. They just want to make sure to do their part to provide robust infrastructure in the area because they understand that ultimately a light at that location will help them as well as the citizens of Morrisville. Based on the cost estimate from the town's traffic engineer, uh, Dominion is contributing about fifteen percent of the cost of a light at that location. One kind of unique aspect of this project is that Slater Road splits the property. And this actually gives Dominion the opportunity to improve both sides of Slater Road across the entire project's frontage. This is great because with this project, Dominion would be able to implement bike lanes on both sides of Slater, sidewalk on the northern side, and an eight-foot, uh, multi-use, an eight-foot wide multi-use path on the southern side. Most projects only are on one side of the street, so they can only improve on their side. With this project, you kind of get the whole deal in one shot, which ultimately is a great benefit to the town. So, this project is taking on a fair amount of infrastructure and while at the same time it, it's providing Class A office space and residential opportunities. And I can't overstate the importance of those residential opportunities in close proximity to new office spaces. Obviously, I do not have to tout the benefits of mixed-use development because the town's long-range plans speak to that quite nicely. But from a marketability standpoint, new firms are looking not just for impressive buildings, but for responsive locations. In order to compete for big firms, it no longer is enough to have really nice office buildings. And so, the whole location has to offer a quality of life that addresses the, the needs not only of the business, but of its employees as well. It seems access to food, shelter, shopping, the more the merrier. And as you know, Morrisville can offer a number of those things in close proximity to this site as well as easy access to an international airport. This project fits nicely with the recommendations of the land use plan and helps implement the vision laid out in the comprehensive plan as staff has indicated. And that's not by accident. We worked closely with staff through several iterations of this project to mold it very specifically to the concepts and policies contained in the town's long-range plan. So, we hope to have your support. I've got a couple of members of my team with me tonight. If you have any questions, we can answer for you. And thank you all very much for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gosh, for that, uh, presentation. I'll recognize Councilmember Ralph with a question.
Um, yeah, just a comment. I mean, I, I just, I think that, um, this makes sense, uh, as we continue to develop a live, work, and play environment. I think when we, we've heard pushback about apartments, but I think apartments make s- sense, multifamily, uh, closer to where, um, people work. And so, Mr. Gosh, thank you for this presentation. And I think that, um, you know, I, I, I might wait and, to ask more questions about the conditions, I want to review those more. I will say that Dominion Realty is a world-class, uh, developer. Uh, we're very fortunate that they continue to work, uh, and invest, um, in Morrisville. Andy Andrews and his team has, uh, done remarkable projects around the state and country, uh, including, uh, Raleigh, the capital city with the big high-rises and big project in Charlotte. Um, and, um, they do really, really good development. So, I want to thank the team and, um, look forward to, uh, working with them as a strategic partner and, um, continuously see where we can explore truly collaborative partnerships with development. And that's, that's the kind of development, um, that they do, so, thank you.
Okay.
And thank you.
I want to share, uh, thank you for sending, uh, that letter in advance. That was also helpful. I'm really pleased to see the plans for the north side of this parcel. Uh, the south side, I'm afraid I cannot support the upzoning from M D R to H D R at this time. As we saw in the future land use map, zoning map, uh, change analysis, um, as part of the land use plan, these three turn, thirteen acres are now, um, M D R. And I'm a little bit hesitant to bring them up to H D R, although it looks like a nice project. Um, every little bit is going to put more strain on our, uh, infrastructure in general. So, I'd like to work with developers like you who are really responsive, um, to advocate collabora, collaboratively with state legislators and Wake County Commissioners and School Board members for the investments necessary to meet the road and school infrastructure needs of our stakeholders. And at that time, I consider increased density for this and other areas of Morrisville outside of our subareas. Right now, uh, the subarea vision, um, is really going to push us up against our infrastructure already. And I think it's important for us to stop doubling down and want, got our town in the in, infrastructure deficit in the first place. Um, so I'm trying to find a way to help us invest our way towards a better future. So, if you guys are interested in, um, maybe sharpening your pencils, seeing if you can work with M D R in that space, uh, I think that'd be really nice. Um, in regards to the Conditional Business Activity Center, B A C designation, I'd be fine if the uses are actually allowed a parking deck. Um, we need more structured parking, but not a lot, uh, not a parking lot, but a structure because that could prefer, preserve more of the green space. Um, I'd also be okay with private recreation facility outdoor. I don't feel like that would detract from any nearby uses. And private entertainment facility outdoor, I don't feel that would either, uh, detract from any nearby uses. So, I just wanted to share my thoughts right now. Uh, we have a public hearing on the twenty-third, we're scheduled to vote on the ninth of next month. Um, so there's, this is the start of conversations. Um, I'd now like to recognize Councilmember Fender for her comment.
Thank you. I'm wondering if we can get a copy of your presentation because I'm, I'm looking at, um, the town of Morrisville's development map and when, um, the site plan that is accessible there is a bit different from what you have on the screen. Um, what you have on the screen is a bit more detailed. And, um, are you able to zoom in on, on this site plan? Where are the, your bike lane that you referred to?
Yeah, so the bike lanes would be on either side of Slater Road, oh, actually on both sides of Slater Road and then...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, on the north side would be a five-foot sidewalk and on the south side of Slater Road would actually be an eight-foot wide multi-use path.
Okay. Can you go up to your calculations for, um, your trees? What is the percentage of tree coverage, um...
Yeah. The percentage of existing tree coverage on this site is almost zero. It was, uh, it was cleared by the property owner, uh, and was under a moratorium which, which recently ended. So, this project actually would, uh, end up adding trees to the site because for the most part, they've been cleared.
I see. And how much of a setback do you have from the road?
That's a great question that I can't answer off the top of my head, but, uh, it looks like a twenty, twenty-foot building setback on the south side and, uh, much greater on the north side. I'm not sure what it is.
So, is that the minimum according to the U D O?
Uh, yeah, I'll find out for you in just one second.
And will there be a, well, the street yard buffer, what does that, um, entail?
Are you talking about as far as planting?
Yeah, the type of buffer that your, your developer will provide. I see the notation there, street yard buffer, but I don't, I'm not familiar with what that consists of.
Well, I'm not sure that I'd be able to quantify.
Uh, just so, just to be clear, for the, uh, the B A C side on the north side, uh, the front setback would be thirty feet. Um, and for the H D R, uh, side, the front set would be, back would be twenty feet. Uh, as far as the buffers, uh, I can look that up, um, since we're, we're kind of high level with this, uh, sketch plan at, at this moment. We haven't gotten too, too into the details about the exact landscaping requirements, but I can look that up for you.
I would really like to see more of a setback and a more, um, opaque buffer. I mean, from, um, you know, what we currently have with our apartment buildings that are being built, the buffer is minimal. Um, you know, I think about what is along, um, McCrimmon, the Trailside Apartments, and I think about what's being built on, um, the other side of McCrimmon at Aviation. And both of those, um, multifamily apartments are ugly and they are right up against the road. I do see that on this site plan, um, I see that the apartments are angled, so, uh, that is beneficial, but I would still like to see, um, more of a buffer, more of a setback, um, than what the U D O requires. Uh, that's all I have for right now.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Mayor Pro Tim Johnson, please.
So, my only question, uh, I guess for the applicant has, right now, has to do with, um, the actual facade of these buildings, both the apartment complex and the office building. Um, can you share anything or, it doesn't have to be, you know, specific or a hundred percent accurate, but some kind of a, um, an example? And, and I'm asking, uh, because I guess I want to know how it would sit in with the surrounding, um, businesses in the, in the area. And I guess then, my other question is, so, this is a, did you refer to this, Elliot, as a sketch plan? So, this is not the actual plan?
Correct. Yes, so this is the sketch that's accompanying the, the, the rezoning that we're, we're addressing right now. So, um, there is a condition, uh, that was provided by the applicant that, that the actual site plan will stay in substantial conformant, conformity to this overall plan, but as far as the, you know, minute details, it, it needs to go through site plan, construction drawing review before we get into any of that. So, as far as actual renderings, I, I'm not sure, um, Neil, if we, we have anything right now, but, but is there, is that a possibility of, of getting something together?
Yeah, and so, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson, what I was going to say is, I, I believe we actually do have some, uh, elevations that we could share. Uh, I'm not saying I could share it with you tonight, but we'd be more than happy to meet with you and, uh, and, and, you know, share those, talk with, talk to you about those elevations, no problem at all.
Yeah, that, it would be helpful to me to, to kind of see the, the elevations of the facade of the buildings. Um, and the only other question I have for our staff, um, the traffic light at Slater Road and Carrington, um, how much of that have we acquired, um, funding-wise? Um, do we have any idea? And if you don't have the answer right now, Elliot, um, you know, next, next time is fine.
I did hold, uh, Ben hostage and make him come tonight, so hopefully he might have the answer for that. Uh, Ben, are you still on?
Yes, I am. Councilwoman Johnson, can you repeat your question one more time, please?
So, I just wanted, Ben, I just wanted to know about the traffic light at Slater Road and Carrington. Um, this applicant will be, um, partially funding that? Do we have any idea? And if you don't have the answer now, that's fine, um, but like to know how far along we are in the funding for that traffic light. Is this, are we done with this project or are we holding monies from other projects?
So, to clarify, um, actually, the Carrington Mill Boulevard and Slater Road traffic signal is already, um, uh, committed, it's, is committed by the developers of the Perimeter Park Peninsula. When that last, there's one additional building that they have to build there and when they build that building, they will have to add a signal at Carrington Mill Boulevard and Slater Road. And when they build that building, they will have to add a signal at Carrington Mill Boulevard and Slater Road. This development is contributing towards a signal at Slater Road and Sorrel Grove Church Road, um, slash Copley Parkway. As far as at that intersection, I believe this is the first development that is contributing funding towards that traffic signal, but it has been identified, um, that intersection has been identified in previous transportation impact analyses by other developments as having existing and future issues.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. That helps. Um, and I guess the only other comment I make to the, um, to the applicant is, um, I, I noticed the dog park, uh, and, and if you're not aware, uh, dog parks are a big issue here in town. So, um, that you've incorporated the dog park, uh, along with the other amenities, the clubhouse and the pool, um, is, um, I think very beneficial.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just clarify, that dog park would be only for those residents, correct?
Uh, yeah, that, that dog park was intended as a amenity for the multifamily community.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any other questions or comments for the applicant or for our staff?
Yeah, just, well, I'm gonna go back and-
Councilmember Rapp.
Sorry, Mayor, I'm gonna try to go back and look, but I would just like to get a, a ballpark, you know, figure of the total investment when we calculate the, uh, payment and the loan and the parks and all the transportation. So, um, I just, you know, I'll go and go, go do that myself. But I, I think it's a significant investment that this developer's making along with the other amenities. And so I just would like to, you know, get that number and one, lot number of the amount of money that, you know, being invested. Um, so I, I think that it, it just, I think this is a side of town that, you know, needs a little bit of a facelift. And I think the fact that, you know, you know, after the pandemic, when people are returning to work, having a place where they can live as well, um, you know, we can agree on some of these other things. So you don't have to give me that number now, but, you know, I'd like to get a, a figure just of the total amount invested in transportation and the parks, so that citizens know, um, how much investment been made in the town by this project.
Hey, Councilmember Rapp, we'll have no problem, uh, you know, sharing our figures with you in that regard.
Yeah, I want the dollar investment, because I want people to know, um, when we make these decisions, we're also looking at what's invested in our town.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I think that's something that, that could be added, um, as Neil said. I, I just wanna emphasize that, you know, with that Parkland PIL, I just wanna emphasize, there is an estimate, uh, based on the anticipated units that were on this sketch plan. It could, it could change, you know, comes like plan, but, uh, just to get a rough estimate, if that's what you're looking for, just to get an idea of kind of the figure moving forward.
Just a rough estimate, that's all.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Gosh. And if Mr. Ward wants to wrap us up and tell us next steps on this item or anything else you'd like to share?
Uh, no, that's all I have. Uh, so next steps would be to, uh, set the, uh, public hearing for the following meeting.
Okay, do we have to take action to do that, or is it just gonna happen?
I believe you have to take action and typically you set the hearing for the following meeting and take a motion, make a motion.
Okay.
Um, I, I'll jump in if you don't mind. Um, just, I think maybe we're getting confused with some of our different processes, but, um, for this item, um, you do not need to set the public hearing. Um, that will automatically, um, happen at the next meeting. Um, all those notices are going out to accommodate that. Um, and then you're looking at potential action two weeks, or two meetings from now.
On March ninth. Okay, great. Thank you very much for that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Ward, and thank you once again, Mr. Gosh. Now we're gonna move on to item nine B. Emily Langston, Planner Two, will present that item. Ms. Langston.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Just, um, give me one second to get the presentation pulled up here.
Can you help, Emily?
No, I think it's just a little delayed.
Probably a little bit further, right there.
All right, perfect. Okay. Um, so I am presenting item twenty-two-one dash twenty-two dash zero, consideration of items to amend the zoning map for thirty-one oh-nine and seven oh-three Slater Road. Um, the subject parcel is shown here, outlined in red. Um, Sam Properties has requested to rezone the parcels from medium-density residential to conditional office institutional. Um, thirty-one oh-nine and seven oh-three Slater Road are two adjacent parcels. Each of them cross into both Durham and Wake County, so that's why you see four different, um, pin numbers there identifying the property. Um, together, it's approximately two point nine acres, the existing land use in a single-family residential. Um, the two thousand nine future land use plan designates the property for office use. So this request is only for a zoning map amendment, not a comprehensive plan amendment. Um, thirty-one oh-nine Slater is within the Town of Morrisville boundaries, seven oh-three Slater is not, so that parcel will need to be annexed into the town. Um, you can see there is conditional office institutional to the north of this property. There is medium-density residential to the east and the west, and high-density residential to the south. Um, as I mentioned, the two thousand nine future land use map does designate this property for office use. You can see that over that area right here. And the draft future land use map that you're considering now also currently has this area designated for office use. Um, the applicants have proposed a series of conditions on the rezoning. Um, all of the uses here that would otherwise be allowed in office institutional, um, will be prohibited with, um, for this particular site. Um, the applicants have proposed some additional conditions, which I'll just, um, sort of summarize briefly. Um, they will provide vehicular and pedestrian cross-access to the parcel to the east. Um, the development will be consistent with the sketch plan, which you'll see shortly. Um, there'll be an eight-foot wide multi-use path developed along Slater Road. Um, the building architecture will provide for horizontal articulation, vertical articulation, change in materials and/or change in colors above the first floor along the corner of the building, addressing the intersection of Slater Road and Suburban Road. Um, parking will not be developed between the building and Suburban Road or Slater Road right-of-way. Um, an enhanced landscape buffer will be located between the parking area and Slater Road. And the property will be annexed into, in the town's corporate limits before development. Um, so here is the applicant's sketch plan that they provided for the property. Again, there's a condition, um, on the rezoning, that the final site plan will be, um, substantially consistent with the sketch plan. Um, you can see on here, the building up to the intersection of Suburban Road and Slater Road, um, the cross-access provided to the parcel to the east and, um, the eight-foot multi-use path there along Slater. Um, and this is an architectural concept that was provided by the applicants for the project. Um, the architecture here is not binding, um, but this is a concept that they've provided. And you can see sort of an example, um, of what they might do in terms of the condition that reference the building articulation, um, here at the corner of Suburban and Slater. Um, so the applicants are going to be constructing an eight-foot multi-use path along Slater Road. Um, no other, uh, improvements are recommended by the CTP for, um, development of this site. Um, the applicants have not provided a TIA at this time, because the project is consistent with the existing adopted land use plan. Um, a TIA will most likely be required, um, at site plan to see if there would be any other additional transportation, um, improvements needed, uh, at plan approval. Um, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from medium-density residential to conditional office institutional. Um, it, the proposal is consistent with the two thousand nine land use plan. Um, it's consistent with, or compatible with surrounding zoning districts and would allow for development that's compatible with developments in the surrounding area. Um, the Planning and Zoning Board also unanimously recommended approval of the request at their January fourteenth meeting. And, um, a public hearing on this request will be scheduled for February twenty-third. Um, and then council will be asked to take action on March ninth on the resolution, um, adopting the Plan Consistency Review Statement and the ordinance approving the zoning map amendment. Um, I am happy to answer any questions that you have at this time. Um, the applicant team is here as well, and I believe that they would like to speak briefly also.
And thank you, Ms. Langston, for your presentation, and good evening again, everybody. I still am Neil Gosh at the Morning Star Law Group. Uh, but on this case, I'm representing a group you may not be too familiar with, uh, called Sam Properties. While this is their first project in the Triangle, Sam Properties has been active in the Class A office market in North Carolina for about two decades. Primarily, they have developed in the Wilmington area. And their portfolio includes offices for some of the largest employers in Wilmington. Groups like Encino, Wells Fargo Advisors, and WellCare Home Health, which is the largest private healthcare provider in the Wilmington area, have all trusted Sam Properties for office space. This time, they want to bring their expertise to Morrisville to attract, hopefully, another large employer or perhaps several small businesses to one of their signature office buildings. As Ms. Langston explained, we are seeking a rezoning which is consistent with both the current and future land use map designation. Our requested rezoning includes zoning conditions, which ensure a development that is consistent with the sketch plan, which you saw. Uh, basically, it'll be a single office building around thirty-six thousand square feet in size with an attractive, uh, architectural corner feature to address the intersection. The project's design also is careful not to allow the parking field to dominate the frontage, so that pedestrians won't be greeted by a sea of parking. Uh, along Slater Road, where the parking field is not shielded from view by the building, uh, Sam Properties has committed to additional landscaping. They even have committed to constructing an eight-foot wide multi-use path along Slater Road that will fill in an existing gap in the sidewalk network. So this is a really great project for Morrisville. This will be a first-class office building. And Sam Properties really brought their A-game with this one. Uh, I wanna thank you again for tonight's, been a long night. We look forward to getting your feedback. And our team stands by, uh, ready to answer any questions you may have.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you for staying with us. Um, so I believe this is an appropriate and suitable utilization in this area, uh, similar to the previous application that you presented in regards to the conditional office institutional. I'd be fine, um, if you removed some of the prohibitions. I'd be okay if you made a parking dock deck there in order to save, uh, more green space. Uh, private recreation facility outdoor, I think that'd be fine. Private entertainment facility outdoor and sports training facility outdoor, I'd be okay with all those uses as well. Um, so I just wanted to chime in on those items. Would any other councilmembers, Councilmember, or Councilmember, uh, Mr. Gosh, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, can I just weigh in on that? The prohibition on the parking deck, just to be clear, was a prohibition, and this is true in both cases, was a prohibition on a parking deck as the principal use. There'd be nothing which would prohibit a parking deck to be constructed alongside the office building. It just was prohibiting it as a principal use, as the only use on the property, if you can't imagine.
Thank you for the clarification. Really appreciate that. Looking for other comments or questions? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender, please.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Gosh has just had two questions. The eight-foot multi-pass, is that gonna be asphalt or cement?
I believe it'd be a concrete multi-use path.
Right, so are, is it, what is, um, on either side of this parcel? Or is it developed? I mean, Google Maps just shows undeveloped land beside there.
Yeah, well, so to the, to the east, there's like a existing single-family home. And, uh, I believe south of this, uh, you can kind of see it in the picture here. There's a parking lot there, uh, for, for a, a non-residential building, uh, to the south. I'm not exactly sure what it is.
But would it be connecting, the sidewalk, would it be connecting to an existing sidewalk? Or is it just in front of this parcel?
Oh, yeah, no, so that, that, so that was the point, that they'd be adding to the sidewalk network to fill in a gap. You can see there's already sidewalk on Suburban Road, uh, and there is sidewalk on, on the south side of Slater Road, um, which we would be adding to on this side. I'm not sure if it'll quite connect, because I believe the single-family property to our east does not have the multi-use path, but if it's just further down, there is an existing, uh, sidewalk on the south side of Slater Road.
Okay, and then my second question is with regards to the buffer. Um, I heard the words enhanced buffer used. I'm just wondering, what does that mean?
Yeah, so, uh, you can kind of see it on this plan right here. There's a, there's a, um, dotted triangular area on the north. Well, yeah, and there, and there's a condition. So on average, the, the landscape in that area would be at least six feet wider than what is required there. And, and, uh, it was illustrated on the sketch plan to show exactly what area that is. So they've, they've kind of angled the parking. It's that triangle right there. So there, where there's, so that's where there's surface parking, but there's no building between the right-of-way and that surface parking. So what they've done instead is increase the, uh, the landscaping there.
That's it? That's all they're talking about, is that little triangle? You're gonna have a little bit more landscaping?
That's correct.
Okay, what about in front of the office building?
The office building is, is meant to address the corner of, uh, the, the intersection there. So ultimately, when this area builds out, it was, you know, my understanding of the guidance of the comprehensive plan is that these areas would, uh, would attract pedestrian activity. And the, and the primary way they do that is with building placement up near the road with sidewalks to encourage that pedestrian-level activity. That's exactly what this project is meant to entail. So, you know, honestly, the idea here is not necessarily to block the building from view, uh, which is why there was the additional condition to add an attractive architectural, uh, corner element to this building. So that it's not just a flat, uh, you know, brick building with glass.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, um, not seeing any other comments or questions, so thank you again, Mr. Gosh. Um, and it sounds like this one is on the similar timeline as the previous one. Um, Ms. Langston, if you wanna just summarize next steps and close us out on this one?
Yeah, that's right. Um, we have, uh, tentatively, I guess, scheduled, but the plan is to do a public hearing at the February twenty-third meeting and then, um, would presumably take action at the March ninth meeting on this. Um, so if there are no other questions at this time, I am done. Um, and then we'll be back in a couple of weeks, I guess, for the public hearing and, um, happy to answer any more questions then. To-
Okay. Excellent. Don't see any other questions. Thank you very much, Ms. Langston. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Mayor.
At this time, we are at, um, item ten, Future Meetings, Events, and Citizen Involvement Opportunities. As always, for a full listing of events, please see the town council calendar, the town calendar at www.townofmorrisville.org. Uh, we're having President's Day Monday, February fifteenth. Our town offices will be operating under their regular schedule, um, to the extent permissible, given COVID. The Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center, uh, safely reopening on Monday, February fifteenth. Until then, please continue to log your exercise in the virtual marathon and enjoy the virtual class sessions found in our social media channels. Our next town council meeting will also be virtual, six P.M. on Tuesday, February twenty-third. And as was discussed earlier in our meeting, the annual retreat will take place from Friday, February twenty-sixth through Sunday, February twenty-eighth. That will be a virtual meeting, which you can view through streaming. Um, at this time, we're at item eleven, Council and Manager- At this time, we're at item 11, Council and Manager Comments. We'll take them in this order. Mayor Protim Johnson, followed by Mayor Colley. Mayor Protim, do you have any comments at this time?
So I'm, I'm going to hope that I'm starting a trend tonight because we need a break and we have a couple of more items, and I'm going to say no comments tonight.
Okay. I just wanted to say thank you to all the public hearing comments which we have received. I really appreciate hearing from our residents, and your comments really truly inform my comments and my actions. Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Robati?
I want to thank the public for all their comments. Really appreciate taking the time to submit those to us, and that's all I have.
Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Rao?
Yeah, I hope that the public felt that their comments were heard tonight, and I hope that they are happy with the proposed changes to the land use plan.
Thank you. Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Just want to thank everyone for a great meeting and so far, and all the public for all their engagement, and that's, that's all I'll say, my comments for the next meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Caramella.
Thank you, Mayor. My comments tonight are to clarify some of the comments that I made on the town council meeting on January 26th. And I've written them so that I can make sure that I cover all my points, so bear with me. I'd first like to say that Morrisville is a unique town in that we have jurisdiction or town limits within both Wake County and Durham County. And my comments on the 26th were about a realization of the fact that over the last couple of years, more specifically since 2018, we have added more residences in the town of Morrisville that have boundaries within the county of Durham. With that said, Morrisville does not have a school district. We, in North Carolina, most of the public schools are county-based schools. So Morrisville does not have the authority nor the jurisdiction to choose which county schools they can attend. You basically, where you live, in whichever county, is where you attend school. To be very clear, if you live in Wake County, you would attend Wake County schools, and if you live in Durham County, you will attend Durham County schools. There are, you know, Chapel Hill's a little different. They have their own school district, but Morrisville does not. We follow what is more consistently used across the state. So with that, my, my thoughts and epiphany was we actually have, within the town of Morrisville, a lot more schoolchildren that attend Durham County schools than we had a couple of years ago. And while we were struggling a lot with redistricting and some other Wake County issues, we're not as aware of what kind of challenges the Durham County families have within Morrisville. So I wanted to start that understanding that there's, there's more people than we realized that are attending those Durham County schools. And I'd like to elaborate further during our joint session with the, our education committee on February 23rd. And I know that they're interested since they did discuss this topic at their last meeting. So thank you.
Yeah, no comments. Thank you.
Mayor, you're muted.
Okay. I think, I think we're ready here for a break, Mayor.
Yeah, so I wanted to, you know, before we go for a break, like, are we going to close session, or can we, you know, postpone that budget outlook? Because this is running really, really late already.
First, I wanted to recognize Town Manager Page. If she or staff have any comments?
No, sir. We have no comments.
So I'd rather if we could power through, because we, we will have lengthier things later too.
Yeah, but we are two and a half hours behind schedule too, so I would rather have that. I got an early morning and I, so that's the reason.
I believe the closed session might be short-ish. So if we could just take a five-minute break now, power through the mid-year budget outlook, and then we can do the closed session. Would anyone be amenable to that?
Nah, I'd rather push it out, to be honest, because nothing is, and I heard the comments that our land use will also be short, but it was two and a half hours.
Yes, it was. Town Manager Page? How difficult would it be to push the mid-year budget outlook?
Can you hear me?
Mayor, can you hear me?
Mayor, let me go and check the audio in the, in the council chambers. Hold on.
Thank you.
Jeannie, were you able to hear us now?
In fact, I would allow to, you know.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. So the question is, how difficult would it be to postpone our mid-year budget outlook? Take a break and go right to the closed session.
That would not be difficult. We would like you to give us support to proceed with the deferred items.
Okay.
And to be clear, Mayor, if I can just be clear, the deferred items that, that staff is recommending at this time to move forward are the $632, roughly $1,000. That's actually the budget already anticipated. We, we would not recommend moving forward with any other items that were reduced, reduced, or deferred from the budget. So with that said.
Okay. And we appreciate the, having that information in advance. Can we go ahead and please chime in in the chat if you have a problem with authorizing those items without the full presentation at this time? I'll recognize Mayor Protim Johnson.
So Jeannie, thank you for all the information, and I am, I am 100% behind staff's recommendation, move forward with the required or the recommended budget items and hold on the rest. I'm fine with that.
Yep, the budgeted deferred items. Councilmember Robati?
No problem here.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
I'm, I'm in support of staff's recommendation.
Okay. As is the mayor. Would anyone else like to chime in? Otherwise, silence is assent on that. Okay. Well, we shortened that 30-minute item to five. So thank you very much, Jeannie, for the presentation and getting that to us in advance. At this time, we can close out the regular part of our meeting. Thank you all for watching. Our next meeting, as was noted, is in two weeks, on the 23rd, starting at 6:00 PM, will be virtual. At this time, I'm going to, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session, at which time we won't have any other public items, we'll be switching to a different meeting. So would anyone like to make that motion? Councilmember Rao?
Mayor Colley, and council, I, I move pursuant to North Carolina Statute 148, Act 318, and 11A4, I move that we go into closed session for purposes of discussing an economic development matter.
Okay. I have a motion. Can I have a second? I'd like to recognize Mayor Protim Johnson.
I will second that motion.
Thank you very much. If Town Clerk Smith could please do a roll call vote to go into closed session.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Caramella? Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Councilmember Caramella? The motion interclosed session passes.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you all for watching this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again. Please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@townofmorrisville.org or visit www.townofmorrisville.org/council for additional contact information. My computer clock says 10:45. Can we please reconvene in the other closed session meeting at 10:56? We are, 10:45, we are out of our, we are now in closed session. Thank you all. See you at the other meeting. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to kind of outline, you know, our dilemma, if you will. The retreat, the annual retreat for the Town of Morrisville Town Council budgeting session, and there's some other topics that we will be discussing this year, is scheduled for February 26th through February 28th. That it will probably be Friday afternoon, Saturday, and then half a day on Sunday. At this time, we do not have a format, whether it's virtual or in-person, identified. The governor has declared that we need to do stay-at-home as much as possible, and also meetings of groups later that are greater than 10 people is discouraged. It is my understanding also that when these meetings are happening, any kind of meetings, that they recommend you minimize the amount of time that you spend in those meetings. With that in mind, a council meeting retreat would probably be a minimum of 20 face-hours for the council members involved directly, as well as additional staff to present the meeting, if that format was declared to be in-person. A virtual format would be rather difficult as well, since it would be a lengthy virtual meeting, and there would need to be probably additional breaks and so forth like that, making the meeting longer, but it would still be able to be accomplished. So I wanted to open up and find out from the council what their thoughts are. If we can't come to a consensus, we do have another town council meeting on February 23rd. But I wanted to start the topic this week so that we could make some plans. So thank you.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, would you be amenable to asking the town manager to do a brief rundown of where they are and what options they are pursuing, or you want us to go right into town council discussion?
Um, I'm flexible either way. If Town Manager Page would like to update us on status, that would be very helpful.
Town Manager Page?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson has sort of accurately related our planning for the retreat at this point. With it being at the last week in February, we knew that was a timeline where the governor might be checking in again on relaxing restrictions or not, so we left that open. Staff has prepared to conduct the retreat either virtually or in-person. We had explored two locations, the Cedar Fort Community Center, where council had its October 10th retreat with just council and limited staff. We had explored options to do it there, with even some staff extending out into the hallway if necessary to limit, and also looked at council chambers, recognizing that it could also be virtually. Counsel, or staff's option is one or the other, not a hybrid session for the retreat, just to make sure that everybody is able to participate in the same manner and level. Staff is already preparing the presentations as was outlined in the final draft agenda. So, so our work is underway to prepare the items, but we are fully able to go one way or the other based on council's preference and continue our planning and delivering of the agenda content. There are options of flexibility to start earlier, to increase breaks, to, to do some of those things if council wants to talk about that. If, if we want to modify the content of the retreat, it, it just creates a different issue for us, which is where to put that content, and it just makes something else longer. If we were, if we went fully virtual, it would give us the opportunity with very limited staff in council chambers to stream to the public, but we do not have that option at Cedar Fort Community Center.
Thank you very much for that update. So I guess it would probably ease town staff if we were to decide to go fully virtual now. So I guess looking for input from the rest of the council, if anyone has any thoughts, if they'd like to wait two weeks to decide final, or we'd like to maybe decide now to go fully virtual, because we can't decide to go fully personal at this time because we don't have enough information. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati?
I'm happy to go fully virtual, as long as we can all commit to not multitasking during the meeting. I, I'm 100% serious. You know, if everybody's willing to make that commitment, I'm fine with virtual. If not, I think we should wait until we can do it in person.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Robati. Councilmember Caramella, please.
No, I agree. I think virtual would be much better, because I understand we did have that kind of a four-hour block when we talked about the land use, but this is like a two and a half days, Friday, Saturday, and then Sunday too. So it would be good for our own safety and also easy to conduct. And I think we have been successfully able to conduct our virtual town halls, I mean, the council meetings. So I guess, you know, with a good amount of breaks and periodically, I think we should be able to knock this off too.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Rao, please?
Yeah, I agree. I think it's best to just go virtual for now, as long as we can be disciplined to stay focused and on track, but I'm, I'm in favor of virtual.
I would be fine with virtual as well. And I don't see anyone else. I'd like to recognize Mayor Protim Johnson?
Yeah, I think we all need to weigh in on this topic, and I think if we're going to go virtual, I think it's a good move to, to say that tonight so our staff can prepare accordingly, and I also, too, am fine with us going virtual for the retreat.
Would anyone else like to weigh in on that? Councilmember Fender?
I'm fine with going virtual.
Okay. I'll pass it back to Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Great. Well, I appreciate everybody's feedback. I, I too am in favor of being virtual. I really like Councilmember Robati's emphasis on no multitasking. That is something that is unique to virtual, to multitask, so we need to be disciplined and so forth. We might want to take some breaks because of the duration of the virtual meeting too, so staff can plan, you know, to have appropriate breaks so people won't be multitasking and they will have their focus time. So I think that's a win-win for everybody. I, I think everybody's weighing in on this, and do we, I don't think we need a motion necessarily about the format, but I just wanted to be very clear that we gave direction to staff.
Okay. Town Manager Page, can you confirm that you've heard what you need to hear that we Town Manager Page, can you confirm that you've heard what you need to hear, that we, through consensus, would like to have a virtual retreat?
Yes, sir, I did, and, and you will formally adopt your agenda. At, at the agenda is what you've typically done, so I don't think you need to do that now. I would like to, to just get a, a, a follow-up question, poll of council. We've, we've put 15-minute breaks in every two hours or so, as well as a lunch. That's with a 9:00 AM start on Saturday. Is council willing to start at 8:00, so that we could either put more breaks in or extend those breaks that we have? Otherwise, we'll just leave it the way it is. But it, it's something to extend those breaks a little bit, if that's a desire of council.
Okay, so while we have an op out on that, so please let us know in chat, and I'll recognize you if you have an issue with starting at 8:00. Okay, seems like everyone is fine with that request. Town Manager, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Caramella, please, with a comment.
Yeah, going back to what Ann said, if you want my full participation, then 9:00 would be preferred, you know? So, but, but I think I like the format, because either virtual or this one, getting breaks, you know, it's, it's a luxury to get 15 minutes, but usually we get 10 in the council meeting, so I'm, I'm perfectly fine, because it has been well padded in this timing here.
So you feel the current format, starting at 9:00, is appropriate? Councilmember Caramella, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, even if 8:30, I'm fine, but 8:00 is a little, on a Saturday morning.
Okay. Are we all good with 8:30, Ben?
Ooh, compromise.
Okay, so once again, please let me know in chat if you have a problem with 8:30. I see some people are already okay with 8:00, so 8:30, I'm sure is fine. Okay, so Town Manager Page, if we could start on Saturday at 8:30, that will still give us a little wiggle room for breaks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, for helping us make that decision in advance and give staff a little more of a heads up, and I'm sure the residents and our stakeholders will appreciate the fact that it will be streamed.